Good afternoon. It is January twenty-second, 2025. Welcome to Queen Anne's County Board of Ed Working Session. Let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to move and to, or to start to open session. Would someone make a motion?
Can I motion for us, the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, to open the budget work session at 3:30 PM?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, has everybody had a opportunity to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we, um, may I get a motion? Could someone provide a motion to approve that agenda?
Can I make a motion for us, the Queen Anne's County Board of Education, to approve the January 15th, 2025 Agenda as presented?
Twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-
It's today's.
Twenty-second as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Um, we're starting with the budget discussion? Item 301?
Yes. Good evening, Board members. And thanks for this opportunity for the team to come together and talk about our upcoming budget and as we build it together. Um, so we do have some information with you, for you this evening that I'd like to pass out. First document that is being presented is the FY budget workshop. And this is some information that talks not only about kind of how, where we are in this budget cycle, some upcoming information that we feel is pertinent to the impact of the budget. And then the end of it kind of just gives you a little bit of a budget 101 that tells you what our different categories are so that you can have a reference point to go back to. And it even describes what each of those categories represent. So we're going to take some time to go through that. We'll start with that right now. We are going to also go through a five-year trend data information. And we do have a summary that we prepared that is a working document. I do want to preference that this is literally a snapshot in time and that these documents will constantly change over the course of the next few months. And so we are going to be collecting this information back. We're not posting things because we don't want it to get out to the public and have a wrong version out there where someone's saying, "But you said this," and we're like, "Well, that was the very first session." And this has changed through there. So we're going to kind of use this as a working opportunity to talk through and work through tonight. So I ask if you take notes, please take them on something else so that we can collect this information back. So I'd like to start off with the FY revenue. So you'll see at first, I guess I should also clarify that we're just going to be focusing on our operating budget. We're not going to be focusing on our capital, anything with that. That's, it's really a separate budget altogether. And we have worked collaboratively with the county. And we constantly monitor that. And so we're going to save that for another evening. We're just going to be focusing tonight on our operating budget.
Real quick question? So the county funding, since they gave extra last year, is that their new low that they have to give that this year? Or does that not change? They can choose to go back to the other number?
Yeah. So that's a really good question. And typically, once they hit that threshold, it does remain the same as a maintenance of effort. But it's going to be different this year. And we're going to share with you some challenges that are coming down of how there are a new law is out there that we're going to talk about that could potentially reduce the overall cost of what they have to provide for us.
And I was just going to add, what the other sort of misconception that could happen there is that floor that they create, it's not the total amount that they give you that becomes the floor. They calculate it on a per pupil basis. So even though, let's say, they gave us $70 million because it was around that last year, if we would have had a decrease in student enrollment this year, there is a chance that they could have given us less money because it's on that per pupil basis.
Right. Good, good point, Matt. Thank you for that. So we're just going to focus on today looking at our revenue, which is basically our state aid, which is calculated based on several different factors. It's calculated on enrollment, on the wealth of the actual district, on the student body demographics, meaning what students are identified as English language learners or multi-learners. This is what the new multilingual learners. What students are maybe special education, who is identified as a farm student. So those, those different categories actually are like, I want you to think of them like different buckets.
It's a farm student?
That's a free and reduced meal student.
Okay.
So, and thank you for asking-
I don't know what that is.
It's in your list.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for asking that list because we're asking for that because we do speak in, in our language and we apologize for that. But, but I want you to think of it in buckets. You have a bucket that's your foundation money. That's something that every single student who is enrolled and we get credit for gets. And then you have kind of these add-on buckets. So if I, as I said, if I'm special ed and a farm student-
The next slide.
Then, then I'm going to get additional money. So this is all based on enrollment. And, and as Dr. Kibler shared with you, our enrollment is flat. I mean, we didn't have a reduction, but we didn't really grow. And we don't anticipate growing. And there's several reasons for that. We've talked about this before. Birth rate, we've talked about, you know, the impact of COVID, kind of the residuals from that. So we, there are a couple of factors. But right now, we are, are flat in our enrollment. Don't anticipate. We get plenty of reports. We work with the state. We work with the county to make predictions. So think of it that way.
So my only question is, what about the new, the communities that are being, that are doing construction right now? Like we've added 30 students to various schools, at least in North County. I don't know what that looks like because most of the construction on the island is 55-plus. But they're leaving houses and people are buying their houses. So we don't have any anticipation of growth because of those things?
So we don't actually because of the way that our class sizes are kind of ballooning out and coming back in. So it's, it's, it's an interesting thing that you have. If you look at the different classes, some classes are much larger than others and you wonder why, right? But that's all based on birth rate and things like that. And so as you predict out, you have some larger classes leaving and some smaller classes coming in, or actually smaller classes in the middle right now. And so that's why as we, like right now, our enrollment in middle school is down. Eventually, that'll go to the high school enrollment. And high school will be down. And we don't have enough coming in of heavier class sizes in pre-K, K1, 2 to be able to off balance that. So it ends up to be a flat, if that makes sense at all.
And you don't count the three-year-old programs? Because it's a different bucket?
It's a different bucket. And four-year-olds as well.
Question. So I know we're talking about the budget for this first upcoming year. And we talk about projections because there is three new communities being built as well. How far out are we allowed to project?
Ten years.
Ten years.
We always do, every year we do ten years. So we always constantly come back and it's always ten years out.
Okay.
And if I can add to that, so Mr. Bariclow in, under Mr. Pender's group, he works on every year, I forget the, the plan's name. But with my, my enrollment folks and his team, what is that report called?
So one's a comprehensive maintenance plan and then one's the feasibility plan that ties into that.
So we have, so basically we'll take data. He knows about how communities are growing in the district plus what our own enrollment trends look like and kind of mesh that together to work on our own projections. And then we compare those to what the state is projecting for us. And it has to be within a 5% variance, I think, Mr. Pender?
Yes.
For every grade level?
And we work with Steve Cullen too, which is from, you know, employed by the county. And he's part of the team as well that helps us to, you know, look at and make sure that we're articulating every different aspect of that. That's good. So the third, third slide basically is our state aid funding breakdown. And as I said, I kind of want you to think of these things as like little buckets. So you have your foundation money. You have CCR, which is your college and career readiness. So there's a certain standard that students have to meet. Once they meet that standard, they have a designation of college career ready. And then they get money attached to that. Transportation, compensatory education, concentration of poverty. So when we, we look at concentration of poverty, we look at our community school type of opportunities, multilingual learners, we talked about special ed, transitional supplemental instruction. You've got your pre-K, your career ladder, and your blueprint coordinator. Those are the different buckets of funding that we get. And, and it's various calculations of how, how the monies are calculated within each of those. It's not as easy. The foundation money is probably the easiest to be able to calculate. But as it relates to starting to calculate some of those others, they have a lot of different variations on them. Sorry, we're going to go through all that, but I just want to make sure that you understand like kind of all the different breakdowns there. So you'll see our, our fall enrollment. And you'll see that we're very flat as we talked about it. We were up 2.75 students. You'll probably say, "How do you get a part-time student?" We do actually literally have a part-time student and that adds to that, that variation. The next slide, I'm going to start tag teaming this with Dr. Kibler. We have a draft summary of the state and local funding. This is a picture in time. And this is what I want to stress enormously. These are the figures that we got on Friday on the 17th. So the governor dropped his budget on the 15th. It went out to the districts on the 16th. And then we got finalized numbers as superintendents and assistant superintendents and executive team members of, of this calculation. However, there's proposed legislation that has a tremendous amount of impact on our budget. And so we're going to talk through that together. But as it relates to this draft summary of the state and local funding, Dr. Kibler, will you just walk us through this, please?
Sure. So basically, the way, the way the state calculates this is they calculate the buckets overall. So rather than looking at it as like separate state and local, they would, they would do, they would get a per pupil amount for like foundations. So how much money you get per student for the foundation program? They take that total and then they do a proportion based on the wealth of your district to divide it up between the state government and the local government. You will notice that our proportion is roughly, we always say, and the commissioners will say, it's about 40/60. It's a little bit closer to actually, I think, 38/62 if you, if you look at it. But that's, that's what you're seeing happen in this chart. You will notice at the bottom, the maintenance of effort, local autonomy in the local share, the second to last row. That's the place where we're recognizing the commissioners giving us over previous years above that maintenance of effort and where that has been attributed to.
And all of our calculations that we are working on together are not actually looking at just a maintenance of effort or just what the commissioners are expected by Comar to provide for us. What we are using is a $5 million marker over flat from last year in anticipation that that is what the commissioners will be supporting us on. Hopefully more, but that is something that I feel strongly, and as a team, as an executive team, we feel strongly that the commissioners are supporting us at a minimum of a $5 million above. So if that number were to change, that would also negatively impact our budget. But we're going to use that as a placeholder right now because we feel that strongly enough that they have made that commitment for that $5 million above flat, even though the calculation in the, with the new proposal of the legislation could actually mean they could give us less than last year. But we're going to get there in just a minute. So any, any other comments, Dr. Kibler, on?
I don't think so, just unless anybody has questions. So basically behind this is the number of students you have per category. And then basically how much money the, the law says is allocated per pupil in that category, that's where these numbers come from.
Using this year's numbers? This year's enrollment numbers?
Correct. So September 30th- September 30th of '24 for the '26 budget.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yeah. So your, your year goes like '24, '25. So they usually will refer to that as FY '25, even though it started in '24. So those numbers from FY '25 impact your FY '26, even though they were taken in September of '24. It gets a little complicated.
I do have one question. I know that you can't anticipate, but I know that you were saying that certain times in the years you have an influx of kids, like by January, there's usually. How much does that affect the budget? And is there any way that they could, that it's almost like you, how much does that negatively impact the budget long, like in the year? When you think about the buckets and kids, like are we talking 100 kids? Talking 200 kids? We're talking five kids? Like?
Not, not 100.
No, I would, I would bet it fluctuates because you have students coming, students leaving. It's probably within 30 either direction throughout the year.
And I don't know that I would say that that would have a huge budget impact because it's not like a whole class. It's not like you're adding a teacher. It might be two third graders and a fifth grader and a, you know what I mean? So it's, it's students that kind of probably go more the gamut. Or you might see it in one specific grade level where you do see an increase. And we have that at Mata Peak Elementary School. We've had an impact, and at Graysonville for that matter. We've had specific grade levels that since we started school, they've had an influx. So the teachers unfortunately have a little bit of larger sizes than the rest of their peers in the school.
Okay.
Quick question on this. So I'm looking at the summary of ma, of major state aid programs. You said that the governor has dropped his budget, approved budget, correct?
Yes, correct.
Not approved yet.
Not approved, no. He's dropped his budget.
His budget. So is that 42, 131, 342? Is that, is that a projection off the numbers of students we have that we're, we're going to have from the state?
The next column is the 43.
43, 5.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So the FY '25 is this year we're currently in. So that's the projection?
Yes. So the projection basically is a 1.426 million dollar increase.
Okay.
So think about, that's a really good point. So think about that. An increase of only $1.4 million when we have to do, you know, nearly $5 million just in enhancements. And that doesn't include some of the other insurance, estate retirement, and things that are mandated by law for us to increase next year. And we're going to talk about that. But it's a really good point. That's a very minimal amount of money to make groundbreaking changes that this blueprint is intended to make.
And there, there is a bill that we're going to get into that's in the legislature right now that's going to affect that amount.
Exactly.
That'll negatively affect that amount on the next slide.
So the question on that typically, well, I mean, now with that legislature, we, we can't know for sure. But typically, you say that bill wasn't there. What is the margin of error that you typically see with that proposed budget? Is it 4%, 2%, 1%? Is it typically, say you've got 43 million here? Do you see any more than like $500,000 difference, a million dollar?
We definitely can see larger variation and, and-
I'm just wondering what the swings might be.
Yeah, in the most subsequent years, it, it's really not predictable. I mean, just because-
Last year was about 200,000. From Janu, from January to the final approved budget in June, I believe it was like between a $200,000 and $300,000 negative impact.
Okay. So it wasn't absurd amount of swing, but it's still a good chunk of money. Yeah, yeah. I wasn't sure if it was millions or whatever, but yeah.
But it hasn't been as predictable as it was in the years past, to be honest with you. It's getting less predictable as we move forward.
Right, especially with the new legislation.
Exactly, yeah.
And we're going to dive into that legislation.
We're going to do it right now. Yeah. So the proposed legislative changes are pretty significant and they're actually pretty complicated. And I'm, I'm going to kick it again to Dr. Kibler because we've talked through this process a lot and I want to make sure that we get it right because it's hard to understand. So I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sure. So at our last board meeting, so that was last week, so, correct?
Yes.
We talked about, we did the Blueprint 101. And one of the things I think that we were doing as we went slide by slide, we were talking about potential legislative changes this year. And one of the potential legislative changes is delaying the collaborative time piece of pillar two of the blueprint. Pillar two is the diverse teachers and leaders piece. And collaborative time is in reference to getting our teachers to a 60/40 split in the, the amount of time that they're like standing up. This is a gross, or maybe not the best analogy, but thinking about standing up directly lecturing students, limiting that to 60% of the day where the other 40% would be working with students on interventions, collaborative planning with other team members, data analysis, their own planning time, things like that. So nobody's really meeting that necessarily throughout the state. So it was a piece of the blueprint to get to that. And it was a phased-in piece. Well, one of the proposals in, in the budget and it's in the legislature right now is to delay that. And it would reduce our foundation money by $163 per student. So it would take the per pupil funding from $9,226 down to $9,063. The issue with that is it doesn't only affect foundation. Removing that 163 from foundation is bad enough on its own, but the compensatory education amount that we receive per pupil is based on 85% of the foundation per pupil amount. So I know this gets confusing. I tried to lay it out as best as I could. The multilingual learner amount is based on 98% of the foundation amount. So you can see when we went back to those, if you go back and look at those buckets, three of those buckets would be impacted by this legislation. We are focusing on this slide just on the state impact because based on our, our conversations with the commissioners, as of right now, we wouldn't anticipate them to go down in their funding. So we are only showing you the impact this has on the state. And you can see per category what this does. And it's an overall reduction of the slide we just showed you in state money of about $1.3 million if this would go through.
That would leave us with an increase of $83,000. However, with our community school, we're obligated to put funds towards our community school of about $300,000.
Additional that we were from what we were last year.
Last year. So that would actually bring us in at less than $83,000. We would actually be in a negative of about 215.
From last year.
From last year. So again, thinking that through, the impact of that, knowing that you have the cost of doing business, knowing the increases in some of our state mandated responsibilities as well as our requirements for contractual purposes, that, that's going to be some concerns. So-
I just want, if I can, real quick on this. So this is a bill. It takes time for bills to move through. I'm sure council could help explain. But we'll be watching this. But what we're being told is this is one that might not get passed until the beginning of April. So we'll know how it's going, but we, we don't really know. Just basically the end of the session? Exactly. Right, which is a problem and runs up against you. It's like-
So basically, we just need to plan for this happening? Basically, plan for the worst and hope for the best at this scenario?
Yep, that's exactly right.
So we can basically eliminate the 13 or 13 out of the budget?
Exactly.
Okay. Make sure we're just tracking down this.
Exactly. So, so this proposed legislative change on slide seven, I want to share with you where that money is actually going. So I know, I'm sure that you heard on the news over and over again that we're in a $3 billion deficit in the state of Maryland. So, you know, when Matt and I first saw this, we were putting our heads together and we're like, oh, well, logically speaking, this is obviously going to go. He's, he's reducing this so that it can go towards that $3 billion deficit. But that's not the case. Actually, what he's doing is reallocating that money at $57 million a year over the next four years to the Maryland State Department of Education to employ 160 new positions that will address literacy and grow your own initiatives to support the blueprint. So that's also something that as superintendents and assistant superintendents, that we really have some concerns with and that we've already started to work collaboratively together to have one voice and one message that we just don't feel that this is the right time to be able to be pulling funding away from us and giving it to the state that certainly, as it relates to literacy and grow your own initiatives in our individual LEAs, that we would take those responsibilities on and appropriately address them in the blueprint. So that's another thing that is concerning that I feel like our public and our constituents, our stakeholders need to understand that not only is the money being cut, but it's being cut for the purpose of going to MSDE to create 160 new positions. That will probably tell us to add new programs and-
Didn't they have like a huge percentage of open positions last year? How are they going to fill 160 more if they can't even fill the ones that are already open? That we cannot answer.
So instead of fixing the state budget, he's going to basically take money from the county levels, pay more state employees, and then basically try to implement more stuff with less funding. And every single county is struggling right now.
Yes.
And is this being at the state level? Is this, is this being backed by all of our state representatives?
I don't, I don't think it is, honestly. I think that everyone's trying to just kind of wrap their heads around it right now. This is all new information that's just come out between last Friday and today, basically. And so I think it's starting to get a lot of traction out there. And I think it's going to start going out to each LEA as they have their meetings. And I think that there's more to come to, to kind of position ourselves to, to, you know, testify in legislation, to be honest with you. So that's, that's what the superintendents do. We testify on various bills. But this will be one that we will spend a lot of time, energy, and homework on to be able to show the negative impacts on, you know, on trying to implement the blueprint. We, we don't, we don't believe that the blueprint is bad. We think that it has some very good characteristics. And we've seen some very positive things come out of the blueprint. Just alone, our expansion of pre-K has been amazing through the, through the state of Maryland and should be celebrated. But this is not going to help us to continue making successes out of the blueprint.
From a legality aspect, as a county as a whole, this could be some, have we gone to the commissioners? Have we reached out to our state reps?
This is just happening right now. So you guys are the kind of the first ones to get it. And then, as I said, we've had-
Because as a whole, I feel like we can make a lot more noise. Not, not taking anything from the superintendents, but as a whole, I think we can make a lot more noise than just superintendents.
We all have to stand tall together, for sure.
Right.
Now, we have had, as I said, we had an impromptu emergency call for the superintendents and so that we could make sure that we had all of our facts and information correct. And that's about as far as we've gotten right now, but more to come for sure. And absolutely, we felt that strong enough about it that we should put it in here. You know, it's, why wait until it becomes a law? Let's talk about it now so that we can all get out there and say how we feel that this could, you know, potentially take us back instead of moving us forward.
Do we have the legislative number on here or the proposed bill's name? That we can find it?
I don't know.
If we don't, we'll have it next Monday in the legislative committee meeting. And I'll make sure I bring it.
Yeah.
And let us know. We have a meeting next Monday on the legislative committee. They will likely address this.
It's going to be your biggest topic.
And we'll get it, yeah. And we'll get that information because they always have the, the bills and the numbers. And there's a link that we have, we could go-
Got some pictures and signs if you guys want to go up front.
Right, we need to. Definitely need to.
So we definitely will get that information out for sure. So, so continuing to move on to slide eight, some factors that are really going to be affecting and impacting our potential 2026 budget are, as we just talked about, the potential reductions in state funding, right? Increases in employee benefits, which are tied to their contract. Salary enhancements, which are also tied to contracts. Not simple cost of doing business, right? Your inflation, we've talked about this ever and ever again. And we're going to take an opportunity tonight to look at that five-year trend data look at that five-year trend data so that you can see that cost of doing business and what it looks like on, on our accounts. And then just underfunded blueprint mandates. So even though, you know, we are getting some funding for CCR, your college and career readiness, national board certification and things like that, we're, we're getting like that wealth-based calculation and it's just not enough. So for every student who has access to four dual enrollments through the course of a year, we get about a third of the cost of what it costs to have them take the four classes. So that funding is not in our budget and we have to kind of build around it. So those types of things start to add up quickly. And, and what I would consider to be not unfunded, but underfunded, right? They are funded, but just not at the level that we need to be able to make sure that we can meet all of the students' needs in that particular area. And, and as I said, the same for like national board certification. I mean, we first started whatever, five years ago, whatever it's been now, we had maybe twenty five teachers that were nationally board certified and now we've added like basically close to forty every year who are in the pipeline. And, and some of them just finished in December, so they'll be hitting next year's budget. And so we, those are all different things that we just have to really consider and make sure that we, you know, take into consideration as we build the budget.
So the underfunded blueprint mandates, basically the schools and the counties are being held hostage by the state. If you just don't do it, you get less funding?
That's exactly right. And in our case, you know, we've talked about sometimes, sometimes in some cases, the penalty is almost worth it. I know, I hate to say that because I'm a.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, I'm a total rule follower and I, I want to make sure that we, that we do things right. But honestly, when you calculate it out, because our percentages and some of those are smaller, if we didn't do it, you know, they could pull funding from us, but that calculation wouldn't.
Cause at the end of the day, we have to look after our students and our people in our county.
Right.
So that's, I wasn't sure. Sounds like you already have the cost analysis.
We do, but it's not the right thing to do. I mean, you know, we, we want to be good stewards. We want to follow the laws and rules. I mean, we don't want to, you know, knowingly and willingly not follow something that we should be following. So.
But if it's putting strain on our budget and we're laying off, getting rid of positions and
We will be.
directly impacting our education, there's got to be a give and take. I understand we got to follow rules, but at the same time, we have to look after our children, our teachers and our educators and our staff. I, I understand what you're saying. I'm all about, hey, I work for the government, I'm all about following the rules.
Yeah.
I'm a law-abiding citizen.
Me too.
But sometimes we have to look after our own. And.
Yeah.
I have one, just one question real quick on the potential reduction in state funding and you're saying they won't make a decision until April-ish. Is there anything that we can do to impact it prior to April? Like, is this where the, like, you reach out to your local?
Right.
Okay. So like, can we get a letter and get it sent up so they can start sending and emailing?
To all of our local, you know, Steve Arntz and, and, and Hershey, you know, you can reach out to all of them who are always extremely responsive. We, we actually meet with them as an Eastern Shore superintendent group called ESMEC. We do touch points with them through the session. They know what our priorities are. They gather information so that they can have a better understanding. So as votes come up, they can be informed voters.
So is it more about getting to them or having just the local people reaching out to them as well?
I think everybody.
Okay, so we have. Okay.
Yeah, I think the more that they understand the concern and I said that this is kind of one of those things where it's like, this is a big red flag, like we should be sounding the horns and saying, this is a problem. You're asking us to make groundbreaking changes and advancements in public education, but yet you are defunding us.
And the problem is he's not even taking the money to help with the deficit of the state. He's just redoing it for the state.
Re-pipersing it.
That's what I said to Dr. Sales.
That's the worst part about the entire thing. Absolutely.
You would almost understand it if you said, this is going to help offset the deficit. We're going to hire more people at the State Department of Education. It's hard to swallow.
So as we shared, basically, if you go to slide ten, this, it just shows your accounting structure, starting with O one to, to twelve, and that's how we track all of our information in that accounting structure. And then if you continue on in the slides, you'll see category one, it has just an explanation of what each category is. I'm not going to read them. Certainly, actually this part of it, you know, Carrie can send out this part to the board members so that they can.
This is actually posted, this presentation.
Yeah, so there you go. So if you have, I mean, take some time to read through it. If you do have questions, feel free to reach out, but it's more of just an informational, this is how our whole budget structure is put into place for us to track spending. So the next thing is the board members will receive a budget summary that will consistently be updated between now and the time that your budget is published. And so this just pulls from the actual budget itself. Did I need some? This just pulls from the actual budget itself and it summarizes it by sharing with the board, what are revenues, how are they increasing or decreasing? And then part one is really what adjustments in your budget are you putting forward? So it actually captures everything on every single adjustment. If you don't see it in here, that means that that budget line item is not changing. There's no proposals to change it to increase it or decrease it. So if it's not on here, then it's not increasing or decreasing, it's just remaining the same. So for instance, if we had a line item for, I mean, substitutes on here, I saw me and I narrow it on that because it's got a question mark by it. So if substitutes are on here and we have allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and our trend data is showing that we're spot on it and we're spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we have no intentions of changing that line item. It would remain at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you went into your budget book and you went to that line item, you would see it. Now, if we felt like we needed more money because we're looking at trend data and we're like, oh, trend data shows that we're constantly or consistently going over by twenty five thousand dollars, then it would show up on the sheet and it would say that we want to increase it by twenty five thousand dollars. So that's kind of how the summary sheet works. So the revenue, as you see at the top, you see the state revenue and we've talked about that, the one point four two six million dollars. That is obviously going to be impacted by the legislation if that is to come true.
And I would just add, Mr. Dre, you said you would maybe lean towards going ahead and reducing that. So if that would be the direction of the board, that's why we want to do this tonight.
Exactly.
We would make that change tomorrow.
And then you can see that we put a placeholder in there at five million dollars above what the county provided for us last year. So the county actually provided for us six point two million dollars last year. So this would be keeping that exactly what they gave us, despite any of the legal, you know, laws changing and, and putting a five million dollar marker on top of that. And then you would see the total.
But that hasn't been approved, right?
That has not and will not be approved until officially June.
So we can't count on that money. So we technically shouldn't budget for that money.
We can do that, but that, that's going to make it even more challenging as it relates to.
But the problem, what if they don't? That's the thing. And then we budgeted for it and then they don't give it to us. We're back in a situation where now we're five million dollars in the deficit.
We could be, but we're, we're talking right now. I mean, that would be fifty positions and that we would have to eliminate and then maybe potentially bring back. And I, I don't.
There's dialogue, current dialogue. Okay.
Yeah, there's definitely current dialogue for that. And I mean, and certainly the board has the opportunity to meet with the commissioners once a month. Two of the commissioners, I should say, once a month. Two board members get to meet with two of the commissioners so that we don't violate any laws, Adam. So we could certainly have that conversation in post-session.
I know what you're saying. I understand what you're saying about like, hey, that's fifty positions you have, but we can't budget money that we don't have.
That's fine if that's the way the board wants to do it, then we would move through.
I'm just throwing that out because like, we don't know if we're having that. So if we say we do, you're in a situation last year where next thing you know, you're, you're in a, we're in a budget shortfall. So I understand it's really hard. That's five million dollars. Like that's, I know it's going to be different, but we can't budget. Then if we happen to get.
If we did that, we'd be taking away all the salary enhancements and, I mean, and then, yeah.
Yeah. So let's look at that. So the salary enhancements right now, we have a marker on that at about four million.
What does that mean?
That final number.
What does salary enhancements mean? Like increased, like raises? Okay.
And, and, and the fixed costs associated with those salary enhancements. And then you have your health insurance rate placeholder, which we had originally put at seven point five, but now is coming in at ten.
But before we talk about that, we have a three-year contract with them. Those salary enhancements have to go in. We would have to look at cutting other things.
So that four million for the salary enhancements, that's, that's not a cost savings?
That's an increase.
No, it's not. It's an increase.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, four million dollars.
Positive numbers in that column will be adding to the budget. Negative values would be.
So if you.
Okay.
Right. And if you, so the total unrestricted revenue, if you're taking that down to zero, which is what the board's suggesting right now, then that bottom line of eight million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand would increase by six million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. So that's what, fourteen, over fourteen million dollars that we would have to.
Eliminate from the budget.
Well, yeah, we'd have to eliminate from the budget in order to meet these requirements. And that doesn't include all these other things that we've listed. So we don't know what the state retirement increase is going to be. We don't know the total increase in dual enrollment, AP, materials instruction. We do know the laptop lease. We, we know that we were saving money on synergistic.
No, but I get what you're saying, right? If we don't have, if we don't, if we're not certain we're getting the money, we shouldn't budget it.
Yeah.
But here's where we run into, we, it's a.
So it's different for expenditures and revenue though.
Right. It's sort of a shell game. If we budget at zero and we let all those people go, what happens if we get the money and they've moved?
That's where we're asking those questions. But at the same time, what I'm saying, you're talking about the four million, okay, when we talk about revenue and I'm just backtrack real quick. So the five millions of revenue, we're getting that money in is what we're, we're projecting, projecting.
What we're asking for.
Asking for, asking for.
Well, now I'm not even asking for, if I can correct you, I'm sorry, because we're going to ask for a lot more than that.
Okay, the projection of.
I mean, I'm hoping the board is in that position. It's, it's the board's decision, but I would hope that the board.
But we can't, we can't budget for money that we know we don't have.
Yeah.
Correct. When we talk about expenditures, that's slightly different because expenditures, you know, you're going to have it, you know, with the salary enhancement, so you can't take that to zero. We know that's already in there.
Right.
So that's a different story.
But if we're.
But I understand what you're saying. How do we let go fifty teachers and then what if we need them back?
Right.
This is where we need to get nitty gritty and dive into this and let, figure it out. I mean, that's why we're all here. I got it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, that it, we're, we're it's, it's between a rock and a hard place right now. Because the five million dollars we don't have and what if we don't get? And then we take those fifty teachers, next thing you know, we have to let go fifty teachers. Now they have nowhere to go because it's too late. Or how do we, where do we go with this budget and how do we do it? Because then if we don't budget for it and then we need to bring back, they're already gone. How do we fix this? How do we go into this? Where do we go? How do we go into the budget and make this work in other avenues? How can, where can we move money or what are we allowed legally to move money to make it happen? And then if we get the. I'm just, I'm asking. I'm not saying, this is, I'm, I'm asking general questions.
And you're absolutely right, but this is why we did furloughs for four days for the entire district so that we wouldn't lose people.
I'm, I'm well aware of that. I'm gathering that. And I know we're, again, we're going to probably lose funding. At the end of the day, that's one thing that we should try. I'm not saying that's something you agree, but we shouldn't set a precedent moving forward that just because we did furloughs last year, that, okay, cool, we shouldn't do furloughs this year. That we don't want to make this a precedent. Like, okay, we have a funding problem. We're just going to add more furloughs every.
Yeah, no, that's not.
That's not a precedent. We want to set.
How much did the furloughs?
It's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each day.
Okay.
So in the four days, we save roughly thirteen, fourteen million dollars or one point four million. I'm sorry, one point four million. Okay.
And that helped with the shortfall.
Right.
Right. And so those, instead of cutting the fifty-three positions, we ended up cutting, we froze positions, we did furlough days, we cut things like synergistic and some other types of, like we froze the textbook line item, we cut tutors. I mean, we did a lot of things to get through in combination with those furlough days. So we still have to make that money up. That money is still not in the budget. So we have to make that up plus this deficit. So we're probably talking well over a hundred positions, to be honest with you. And that, that's actually really challenging to do in a small district. I know that we're not the only ones. I know Baltimore County, they were online the other day, we were on a phone call and last year they cut, do you remember Dr. Kebler?
They cut five hundred positions last year and that just the hundred and sixty-three dollars on its own will make them cut another two hundred.
Yeah.
Is teaching positions or everything?
Across the district.
Across the board, really across the board. I mean, though, but, but, you know, obviously your certificated staff members make more. So when those positions are eliminated, it adds more to, you know, to that than it would for support system, you know, support staff member who makes less money.
So we're talking about staff and I know, I know, I understand the buckets of money. Are there infrastructure situations that could, are we allowed to move the money from that? I, I don't want to say like, hey, let our schools just go to crap. What I'm saying is say we need a new roof for a school.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Can you move it there to take other teachers?
It's an excellent question.
And then the five million, when we get it, cool, that bucket goes back into infrastructure.
No, unfortunately, that is capital and that's what I was very distinct to share tonight, that we are only looking at our operation budget tonight. We're not mixing and mingling with capital. These two things are completely different and those monies can't be used. And that was a big point when we went to build our new central office, which is the first central office in Queen Anne's County. A lot of community members didn't understand, why are you doing that now? That money should be going in the classrooms, but it can't. Legally, it's completely separate. No, it's not state-funded, it's county-funded.
Okay.
For different parties. So the county commissioners made a decision collectively to put money into that building. Now they bond a lot of money and I would.
I was talking about like fixing a school. I understand that was all approved. I was talking about like fixing a school, like a roof on a school or a new bathroom.
But that's the same bucket.
So but some of that comes with state money. So a lot of times that'll be like a fifty-fifty type split. And Sid, I don't want to step on your toes. So, so a lot of times like, and, and a lot of the projects that we do, the roofs are perfect, the tracks are a good example. A lot of those projects, the new lights, those are all projects that are initiated by us too in collaboration with the commissioners. They sit down on a regular basis and say, where are the needs? They do a projection out of, you know, of fire alarm changes and, and storefronts and that type of thing. We, we look at it on a, a projection of years. And the county basically decides, hey, you know, this looks like it's going to be, can, you know, can you figure, this is going to be just over three million dollars to be able to do this, this. And then the following year, we say, here's our need and here's our need. And we, we do a projection out, but I mean, Sid, I didn't know if you want to add.
So that was a good question. It's, it's bonded money and really with the bonded money, you know, you're, you're paying money back on top of that. So they're looking at something that has like a life expectancy of fifteen years or more to, to put that money towards that. So legally, you can't cross those two over. But the, the one thing we've done a good job, I think, with the county commissioners is with our capital of they've asked for, for years and years and years to give us like a steady number, like they don't want to see like a big bubble and then come back down just because of the amount of money that they're bonding. And we've been able to do that, trying to keep it steady. Of course, you're going to have your outliers, like if we get to the point with like, say Centerville Middle School, you're obviously going to see it jump up a huge amount, but we, they would like for us to keep it steady and we'd, we'd try to do that, you know, to work with them.
Right. And so because that's bonded money, it's, it's really considered like what they would, what they would consider like a one-time money cost. It's not something that's like reoccurring. So if you think about it that way, things that are typically reoccurring go into your operating budget. Things that are kind of more like one-time costs usually fall into capital.
So is everything on this, this, this is every cost in the operating budget?
No, no, not at all. These are only things that are either going to be increased or decreased, remember? All the other things that stay the same are, are going to be in the budget the same exact as they were last year. So these are just things that our team already started to say, hey, what do we know is either definitely going to increase or definitely going to decrease?
The, the, oh, sorry.
Then why doesn't it show an amount in the increase?
Because we haven't gotten that far. We're just starting.
Okay, alright, okay.
We're just starting. So we just wanted to give you guys an idea of how do we even start this process? So that's a really good question. Yeah, this is nowhere near finished. We just are getting, and that's why we left out, we left some spots down there because there'll be things that we'll probably likely add, but this is just the very beginning of what do we absolutely know is going to increase or we absolutely know where it's going to decrease?
The four million in the salary enhancements, those are things that they were promised in a contract.
Yes, that's a three-year contract and that meets what the blueprint expectation is. So the blueprint expectation is to hit the threshold of a sixty thousand dollar starting.
Oh, so salary enhancements, that's for teacher, that's everybody. Gotcha.
Everybody.
And then if, can I just, when everybody's looking, when everybody's looking at this, the thing to watch as we move through the coming weeks is that whatever this bottom number in the top right is as we go through, that's our increase or decrease overall in the revenue, as you spoke to. That needs to match whatever we have at the bottom right for an increase-decrease.
So is there a way to show what needs to increase and what, I mean, you know, like these need to change?
Yes.
So is there a way to tell what's going to increase and what's going to decrease or they all?
So that's what, that's what we're.
These are increasing.
Okay.
And, and like, for instance, like the state retirement, last year, the state retirement went up eight hundred thousand dollars. We have no idea what it's going to be. We have to wait and see what it is.
Is there, are there any decreases?
A decrease right here for synergistic.
Synergistic, yeah, four hundred. But almost everything else would probably be an increase.
Okay, yeah, yeah, definitely.
The one, the, the one that we have a question mark on there in substitutes, that right now, and I, I don't have an updated number, I can get it for the next time we meet on this, we were, we were tracking really, really good in our substitute line item. So that one might actually come at the end of the year where we over budgeted that a little bit. So that would be a potential decrease on here.
Or where we actually got spot on and we just remove it altogether because it's not changing. So, but we've been monitoring that because our trend data showed that we were going over consistently. So we added money to that line item. And we're hoping that what we added is pretty spot on, could be a little off. So that's why we're, we're really monitoring it very closely.
Oh, that's a, I was going to say, so that's a question. Because in one of the, maybe it was the performance audit that we got, one of the questions, Matt, Mr. Dre asked, why was the audit done in the first place? And part of it was done because we kept over budgeting and then we went back and said, oh, we don't need that money anymore. How is that? How are we addressing that? Are those items that we? How is that? How are we addressing that? Are those items that we?
So that's where the five year, we're gonna, that's actually a really good segue. Are we ready to move into the five-year trend data?
I don't know.
I just have one last question. If we got the five million from the commissioners, does that mean no furloughs?
No, not necessarily.
No, that's, so if I, so just how this is presented right now, this, this has the one, the, the state increase. It has the, the county increase of five million and we are behind
One point six.
One point six million dollars. And that's with all the other boxes not filled yet.
So we're already, we're already one point six in the hole.
Um, I have another question. Typically, when you see a lot of this stuff come out, state, local, funding, revenue, costs, state retirement, all that, when, when do you usually see those? Yes. When, when do you usually see the revenue from state, the local government, um, like state retirement, all these numbers? When do they actually become a little bit more concrete?
Not on our schedule.
Sid, what about like our eight hundred thousand dollars or the workman's comp? Where, I don't, wouldn't there's no?
Basically, well, I, I can speak for the liability portion of it, um, insurance on the buildings and also. So at our last MAB, um, meeting, they're looking at probably a fifteen percent increase in that item um, overall, but that is just a projection right now. I would say probably in about another month, that will have a, more of a definite answer. Um, I know we were trying to get something from them back in, uh, December. And, you know, basically, hey, we, we can give you a projection, but it's not going to be, you know, something that is concrete. Um, I, I do know that like our electric rates are, are going to be going up, um.
Do you have Delmarva?
Well.
They actually have two.
We, we
No, just saying, cause all the reasons.
We've all, we actually purchased our electric from Washington Gas Electric, um, through Esmech and, and hedged that over time. But tho- those rates are gonna see a substantial increase. So I'm waiting to finalize that. Heating well and propane, you know, right now. You know, we have pretty good prices locked in for right now. We're, we're looking at next year's futures to see what they hold. So those are the items within like a month, but I can have a more concrete.
I was just, no, my question was just like, not when we, like, what is typical that we see the concrete? I'm, I'm not saying like, do we have the you know, like, when, when, like, is it April that we get the numbers, like in the schedule? When do you usually, when do we have these numbers that we can start? Like a concrete number from the state that we're gonna get the funding, a concrete number from state retirement or where we're gonna, some of these numbers that are blank and we need something more.
Oh, do you know the state retirement?
Do you, is it usually like April? Was it March? Like, when do we?
Normally in the spring and it varies on when those numbers come in.
Okay.
But that's one of our.
These, like, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Some of them like, um, like your custodial supplies, um, safety supplies, uh, um, the trash removal, pest control, a lot of those are just like, we, we base them on kind of like inflation.
Right.
So like three to four percent accurate to.
And I think.
Do we have contracts with like these pest peo- the pest companies? Don't mean to say pest companies, um, that we have a set contract where we're like, okay, next year it's gonna go up three percent?
Yes.
Or in the, like an escalation?
Yes, but what you'll see in, in, in the area I ever see, I have the sixth year of what was actually budgeted, what the actuals were. So you'll see in quite a few years, when the times get tough, areas that I kind of ever see end up getting cut. And you're, I'm gonna be over budgeted in certain areas. Like, I'm just, for like instance, you know, water and sewer was three hundred thousand dollars for the past five years. Until last year, we actually bumped it up to where we're, you know, in line with where we should be. So those are some of the hurdles that we're facing that, okay, you come down and go to, here's a budget, where can we cut from? A lot of those areas have never been increased and, but we, I know what the projections are and I know what the contract is. You know, some of it may be five thousand dollars to get us back in a line, alignment with it. Some of it may be twenty-five thousand dollars, so. But we do have contracts wi- with that. Um, I could tell you another big hit we took was with the, uh, lead testing. With every school having to have every single water source tested for lead that, you know, has really rocked our budget. Um, you know, and again, you know, you might be talking fifteen thousand dollars extra, but that's fifteen thousand dollars, you know, that was not accounted for, so, um, but we do have contracts for all of that.
That's all accounted for now, though, correct? That's all put into budgeting now.
Well, we, that's what we have to do. What increase are we gonna do this year?
Right.
Based on this five-year trend.
So is that lead testing every year, every month?
No, that would let testing is, I believe it's every three years. But then you have to go back and some of the ones that have failed, you have to have remediation plan for, what are you doing to fix that?
Right.
Um, so does that come out of your maintenance budget or does that come out of, you know, the testing area? Um, those are areas that we try to look at. When, when we spread things out, we try to look at it basically in a seven, eight-year cycle of what we can replace and what we can do. You know, for those, I know we can't, we can't replace every water fountain, you know, at one time. So what can we do this year? What can we do next year with that kind of plan?
So cup, um, since we're on the lead testing couple of we, I'm assuming since you've discussed it, we had a couple failures in the lead testing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it also
The reason I say that.
The rules also changed and you may want to address that.
Right.
Yeah.
So my next question was, um, what is the timeline on fixing those, legally speaking, from if we fail a test, how long is the timeline to fix that or remedy that situation? Because at that point in time, we should already know the timeline, so we should know what the cost is to fix it. So we should be able to build that in there without having projections, correct?
Correct. So we just actually went through the second testing of the ones that failed.
Okay.
You get a, a second chance for that. And now we're looking at that data to see, okay, which ones went through and passed, which ones didn't, to, to build upon that budget for that. Um, and to back up on the lead of water testing, like, they lowered like the percentage down to a small, small amount. Um, a lot of the ones that were like, hey, um, I'm just using this as an example. You may have a, a, a sink in a back room that nobody ever uses that has a water fountain attached to it. And, you know, that was, was tested. Okay, do we really need that? Can we put a, you know, a sign on there, which we've done? Which the state allows, okay. Well, that's a cost-saving part there, just the sign applied to it, the placard. Um, so, yeah, it, I mean, it's a moving target, but the results we're getting back now, a lot of them, you know, passed the second time, so. But again, there's some that we still need to replenish the, the faucet because I'm pretty confident that's where the issue is.
So it's been single faucets, not like an entire school itself, where it's like the, the water supply systems got the lead. It's been singular point-of-use situations. Is, is that what I'm gathering?
Yes, yes.
So it's something as simple as a single sink in a boys' or men's restroom had lead, but three sinks down did not.
Yeah, if, and again, when you do the water flush, you're supposed to do it, okay. So was the water flush done ahead of time? You know, has it been sitting there? You know, when we did the testing this year, a lot of them had sat there over the summertime. So I mean, of course, you know, you're gonna have that residual buildup. But, um, you know, yes, it, it may be one, or we do see some schools where, you know, hey, maybe, like I said, it is the faucet and let's go to the faucet route of it.
Okay. I was just asking, cause if it's a supply issue, that should be taken up the chain, not typically, if you're seeing an entire school with a supply issue, that's a situation with the county, correct?
Yes.
That wouldn't be something.
It's not a supply issue.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, provided for you is, um, all of our accounts that, um, you can see them by category and the actual account numbers as well as, um, from FY twenty, which would have been the nineteen-twenty school year, all the way through to, um, FY twenty-four, um, which is a twenty-three, twenty-four school year with a five-year average, and then what was budgeted for twenty-twenty-five, um, which is this current year. Um, so, I'm gonna again kick it to Matt if he has any, if he wants to share any specific information. I do know that, um, you know, as we looked at these, um, Mr. Pinder noticed that some of his, um, five-year trend figures, he didn't really were one hundred percent accurate. Um, and felt like maybe some things had not been charged adequately to different accounts. Um, and that's likely because of some turnover that we've had. So, meaning that it was charged, but it just doesn't charge to the right account. And so, um, you know, sometimes that, that does happen if someone doesn't have the, the knowledge base of traditional, you know, institutional knowledge of what goes where, sometimes that might happen, but, uh, Dr. Kebler, did you want to jump in at any time?
I think just, just to kind of explain what you're looking at, how it's organized, so not getting into any numbers. So this document is organized according to the accounting structure that was back in the PowerPoint. So your different, uh, the different buckets we have to, um, account for. So like category one is administration. So if you go back to the PowerPoint, it's slide ten on the PowerPoint. So like the front page is basically the breakdown in administration. And what you'll see through all of those is that they, every, all twelve of them have salary and wages, contracted services, supplies and materials, other charges. Um, and, and some of them have others, but you work through that through all twelve categories. And what you'll, what you'll notice, um.
Yeah.
I'll just make sure, if I was gonna make notes. Okay.
Yeah. So like, so it's just for an example to walk through one, let's go to the very, uh, let's go to eleven, it's, um, maintenance of plant. So it's just a couple pages back or whatever, just as Dr. Kebler was sharing. In maintenance of plant, which is category eleven, you'll see salaries and wages, and then you'll see contracted services, and then you'll see supplies and materials and all those, just like in any other, um, of the other categories. Um, what you'll notice too is that, um, some of the salaries that, for instance, an executive team member would be spread over several different categories. Um, so here you'll see that part of the director supervisor and COO position is actually one part. There's more that you would have to add up to get to that total salary base. Um, cause it's taken out of different categories because his roles and responsibilities are reflected in different categories. So that's why you have to take it out of different categories. But you'll also see like contracted services. I know you've been asking about what kinds of contracts do we have? Rental equipment, you know, repairs, um, trash removal, pest control, those are all the different, you know, environmental testing. And a lot of those categories.
Category.
For just that category. And a lot of those you'll see are showing up, especially in category eleven, in our summary page that will be increased because a lot of the things, um, that Mr. Pinder works with, um, have an increase for the cost of doing business. And a lot of times even for mileage to things like that, that may change at the state level, also get impacted here in our budget as well. Some things that we don't necessarily have control over, that inflation piece or the piece from the state that says, hey, you know, now mileage is gonna be reimbursed at X rate. We have to adopt that. We don't have a choice. So that line item might go up and that, that's not necessarily something that we can control.
And that actually trickles down from the federal government.
It does, it trickles down from the federal government.
Question that you have here, one thousand three here, uh, director supervisor CEO, is that all the same person or is that three different people in this scenario?
In this scenario, that's one person.
Okay. So one thousand three, cause you said it's split in different buckets. So I wasn't sure if that director, it was all the singular person or if that's three different people that you lumped in that same.
Right, isn't that one?
Section eleven maintenance.
I would have, for that one, for that one, I would have to verify.
You can see in one zero zero five right under it, that that is a combination, right?
Cause I see supervisor.
Mm-hmm.
But then I see three different people.
But this, what, I, I will say, what this doesn't have on it, which the budget book does, the budget book provides an FTE column. So you would be able to tell. I can't tell. I'm sorry, I can't tell right now.
For example, let's go back to a
You should have, I, I thought, if you didn't have it, I'm sorry. I thought you guys had one of the current years. Yeah, we will get you a copy of that for sure.
So let me go to one that, that's a little bit different. When you go to, um, let me find a better example for you.
I know, I'll make sure you, I thought you had one.
Okay, so if you go into, um, category two, which is mid-level administration, you'll see a line item of one zero zero six, which is principals. So that line item includes all people who are designated as a principal. So we're, I'm just on page
Guess we should have had page numbers on that, sorry.
Yeah, page number four at the top, it says, um, category O-two, mid-level administration. And if you go down to like zero, one zero zero six, you'll see principal. That encompasses all the principals. If you go to zero, uh, zero zero seven, that's all of your assistant principals. Does that make sense?
What?
And see, in your budget book, it would say how many there are.
It would, it would have a number. And I do wanna, since, since you went there, so there, there's a large jump in the twenty-two to twenty-three fiscal year there for the assistant principal. I think that's come up in the community. I think it might have come up at our meeting last week.
Yeah.
That reflects, uh, a district decision where we converted teacher specialist positions at every elementary and middle school. Or, excuse me, at every elementary school, sorry, I misspoke, to assistant principals. So those eight positions came out of the teacher, the instructional salaries, and went up into the assistant principals. So instead of ten-month employees, twelve-month employees, that could help, they can di- uh, discipline and things like that.
Evaluate.
And evaluate. So it wasn't just that we just added, we, we converted those positions. And in a lot of ways, those teacher specialists were, there was kind of similar duties.
Very similar. Where do we see that difference in teacher specialist, just on track?
Um, it's gonna be harder because you've got so many people in teachers in general. But it would be under instruction like two pages later, three pages later.
Category O-three to O-five.
And it's, it's hard to notice, but if you look from like twenty-two to twenty-three, that twenty-eight point seven million up to twenty-nine point seven million, y- you can't really see it going down because they had salary enhancements in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't, I don't have enough, I don't have a, I'm sorry, I don't really have a better one. Twelve eleven goes from seven thirty to one eighty-three for the specialist, that's probably where.
Oh, right, yeah.
Oh, that's an even better, thanks.
Yep, that's, that's a good call there, yeah. Yeah, so twelve eleven, twelve twelve.
If you look, the, uh, see how in twenty-three it went down? Seven thirty down to one eighty-three, it's reflecting that change.
And that was how many? Nine, eight?
So we had eight altogether. We did it over, we did it over a three-year period too. We didn't do
And it was just elementary?
Mm, just elementary, eight elementary, um, teacher specialist, not reading specialist, not math specialist, but teacher specialist. So eight of them over a three-year period.
Converted from that to an assistant.
Teacher.
Because they didn't have any. It wasn't adding an additional assistant principal at those schools. They had one administrator.
And what is the benefit of having an additional, uh, principal or an assistant principal?
So I think there's a lot of, so you have a ten-month employee, you move, it's a, it's a bigger bang for your buck. So you have this ten-month employee and for a very small amount of money, we can make him a twelve-month employee. And then they can do things like evaluation of staff, they can do discipline of staff. Um, and they can be a designee for the principal. If the principal's out of the building, they have a, a legal designee that can do pretty much anything that they can do.
And that's better in the elementary schools versus middle or high?
Well, the middle high school already was there, so just didn't have it in the elementary school. And it really, in, in a long-term effect, really builds that opportunity, um, for your next level of principals. So now we have, you know, eight additional people in the district that are really being trained to be principals. So as our principals, like Teresa Farnell, start to retire, or Louis Welsh start to retire, we have this good group of people that have experience of really being number two in charge and can, can successfully become principals. So it's a little breeding ground too. I mean, it has all kinds of benefits, but that's just another added benefit.
So I have a, I feel like it's a complicated question. One of my problems or pet peeves is when we bring items for approval from the board. I'm looking at one from last week and it says two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, local FY twenty-five CIP funds. That might not be a good one, cause that might be construction-type monies, but how, where would I tag that to based on these numbers? Cause we get a monthly summary where we see we're either a hundred percent spent, eighty-seven percent spent. If I were to take those numbers and I'm looking at the local CIP funds, how do I match them up so that when we get to, cause a lot of question that we already have is how come this department is a hundred and ten percent spent or only fifty-eight percent spent? How do I tag that or make it match over so that I can see that we actually did have that money? And we're tracking it correctly?
Yeah, that one's gonna be a little more challenging because it is a, a, it's, it is a capital.
I knew I grabbed the wrong one.
Yeah, so that one's gonna be a little bit more, but.
Give some examples. So like, we won't, we won't bring it until June. But when we go to like re-up the power school contract, like the student information system, we would be able to tell you like, like where within the budget book that falls.
Okay.
So that, um, and really, the, the best way that we have right now is by looking through your budget book and each of the like little subcategories, they have explanations of what, um, is in there.
Okay. Alright. Cause that's just one of the things that sort of, we, we hear all the time, everybody wants us to be more transparent in our budget and have people be able to see
Mm-hmm.
where we're spending our money. If there's a way to sort of tie them together. Cause some people do actually go out to our webpages, they look at what's out there on the budget. They do have some questions and we can't, I can't always answer them if I get those questions. Is there a way that we are tracking our grants?
Yes. That, that we have one dedicated staff member that, that's 100% of her job is she tracks all of our grants.
Okay.
Chrissy. She is wonderful and.
A rock star.
A rock star. And she tracks every single, from the smallest teeny tiny grant to your largest title grants and everything.
She tracks getting them, like getting them and how they're dispersed and.
So the supervisor is the one who like will apply for the grant typically and go through the whole process in collaboration with her. There's a series of things that you have to do. You have to do like what's called a C125, which is categorized of how you're going to be spending the monies. So if you have a million dollars, how much of it's going to be in contracted services? How much is going to be in personnel? How much, you know what I mean? So it does all that. It has to go up and get approval. There has to be an assurance that's signed by me. There's also has to be a budget description page that says exactly how you're going to be spending the monies. They have checkpoints in the state where throughout the year, they have to report on what percentage of the money has been spent to date. Are there any changes or modifications that need to be made to, to the budget? And Chrissy coordinates all that and ensures, you know, gets copies and ensures that we are complying with all of those deadlines. But our supervisors are amazing and they, they do a fantastic job of doing it. So it's, it's a really good partnership between them. But we have quite a bit of monies that come through grant, grant wise.
Is that, see in the budget, what money comes from grants? For different positions or different?
You know, I might have to defer to Dr. Kibler on that. Dr. Kibler, they're asking about specific grants. So if we have a Title I grant, is that reflected here of how many staff members are actually paid through Title I grant funds?
That is not in this.
But we do have on the C125, it would be articulated of how many staff members. So. Yeah. And that's, that's something.
And are grants counted in anywhere else? Like in your, in our budget? Like do we show how much money we get from grants each year?
So the grants are all in the, in the budget book are all reflected on page seven of the budget book. That has the restricted and I believe there's in another places well in there.
Those budget books?
I don't think so. These are, I just asked Carrie to go down and see if she could find some to share, but no, these are all. Those are our.
Check your desk. There might be one in there, but.
What are we looking for?
The budget books. Oh, there she got them.
Thank you. Oh, you have one in your desk.
Does that say amended? So you want to make sure you got the one.
Thank you. And what page did you say, Dr. Kibler?
Restricted funds.
It's under restricted funds?
It's, it, I'd tell you, it doesn't have a lot of detail. It never has.
Page six.
Before us, page seven.
These are ours?
So if you look at the federal.
Gotcha.
Uh, six and seven. Yeah. Sorry.
So just to ask a question, cause you know, we're still learning. One of the spots of contention was the group that went to training on a grant. Is that captured? Reported? How, how do we account for stuff like that? Is that included in any of our budgetary items? And.
As a whole, it's captured in the restricted funds, but individually speaking, we have many different title grants. So each one of those is actually a separate grant award. It's called a, actually we always wait on the NOGA, the Notice of Grant Award. Once we get the NOGA, then we know that we are entitled to spend the money. Sometimes those NOGAs come in November, December, later than we had anticipated. But each grant has its own, as I said, it's a completely separate grant in one aspect of the application, the monitoring of the grant, the C125, which is how you're spending it. And, and the, and the maintenance of it to where the check-in points and when they're due to the state. And saying exactly what I just said, like what percentage to date hasn't been spent out? Are you on target to spend it out? If you're not, is there any amendment that needs to be done? And you have to remember too, that these grants all overlap. They're typically, typically 18-month grants. So outside of that, just traditional 12-month opportunities. So they overlap in that aspect. So you could potentially have three different grants, like Title I grants all at the same time that are overlapping. One's concluding, one's almost finished, and the next one's just beginning type of thing. And that's what we were talking about the other evening, that some of these funds that have to be spent out, but it's because the grant is coming to the end of its life.
And you have to spend it before we.
And you, you, if, if your grant is 18 months and you have to write it eight months before that, then just think about where you are. You're well over a year, almost two years into it. And so obviously what you thought was going to happen may be tweaked a little bit. So you might not have as many staff members who participated in a professional development opportunity. So say you had a contracted service to do professional development for, you know, 38 teachers, but it ended, ended up to only be 28 teachers. So then you now have monies left over. So then it's like, okay, we're going to do a budget amendment so we can spend these monies in a different way. And then that's, that's how that, so we continuously are amending, doing, spending, amending till the budget is completely spent out. And in some cases, like the one that wasn't approved, we won't be able to spend that money. So it'll go back to the state and we just send them the yellow sheet and the expectation that we tried to, but we couldn't. And now the money will be returned to them. It goes back in their kitty and then they decide how they distribute it based on, well, for anyways, the title grants based on the federal law.
Right. But how do grants show up in the overall budget? I guess that's what I don't.
Not in this operating budget. They won't show up in that.
Okay.
Cause it's not technically the money that we can 100% absolutely count on. Cause it's a grant. You have to apply for them and get them.
Okay.
And even though a lot of those grants are wealth-based or funded on, on calculations that we know we're going to get something, a lot of times those calculations change from year to year.
Based on the students?
Based on student enrollment or based on the wealth of the district. And so sometimes those numbers, even though we know we're going to get Title I monies, sometimes we don't know exactly how much. So you can't necessarily, you don't, it's not good practice to necessarily tie a lot of positions to grants. Because what if the grant goes away or is no longer funded? And we do have some of our positions that are tied to grants.
I was gonna add that, that has actually been a reason that we have had a surplus at the end of the year is the positions specifically with like Title I. If we were a district that had millions and millions in a fund balance, maybe we would go ahead and float money to hire positions that we put into Title I. Assuming if we got our Notice of Grant Award in the middle of the year, we could just pay ourselves back. We have not been in a position to do that. So we write for a position, but like we, we're just getting Notice of Grant Awards for like Title I, like we just got it today for fiscal year 25. It is the seventh month of fiscal 25 right now. So if we put a position, that's already seven months into the year. We would just post that right now. And that's how you end up with a surplus of those grants.
Exactly right. So then therefore now we have to do an amendment to that and then we have to spend those monies in a different manner. And, and you can see how that gets cyclical. Last year and actually the year previous to that, in the transition that the state level had between their, the last three superintendents, we have not been getting our Notice of Grant Awards until well after December. And so they are challenging because half of the year has gone by and we know we're going to have money left over in there. So we all have to start thinking about what does that look like? How do we, how do we spend that money?
Is that for a singular position or say we're halfway through the year? Say, I'm throwing random rows. You get $20,000, but we know it costs for an individual for one year, 20 grand for the entire year to be a Title I funded tutor, just throwing random numbers out there. But we're halfway through the year. So you know, it's going to take $10,000. Can then you bring in two tutors for the second half of the year?
We'd have to do a budget amendment, but yes. And the budget amendment process is pretty intense. They make it kind of difficult. So it might take us two or three months to get a budget amendment through, believe it or not. And.
So you've still got money left over.
Exactly. It's, it is challenging and it's always been that way. I mean, this is not, you know, it's just, it's been more challenging recently.
Does that carry over?
As I said, there's our 18-month grants typically. And so you just have to watch your timeline.
Same individual. So you get it approved today. You actually have well into the following year. So you have a tutor for the rest of this year. And then.
Potentially some months, some months.
If it's 18 months, you're, you're going to cover if you have half the year. Now you're pretty much, you're going to cover the entire next year.
You're talking calendar year, not school year.
18 months, calendar year.
An 18-month grant, but I think, I think it would be backdated. It wouldn't. It wouldn't start, it wouldn't start from the time you got the money.
So that, that changes it. So if it was dated for today, 18 months, that's the rest of this year and next year.
And then.
So it would cover.
So and I, I really appreciate your point. And what we also run into is if the title grants go down, we go ahead and bring those people in and then you end up with layoffs.
Yeah. We're tracking. I understand.
Yes. And it's, so last year, for example, on the Title I front, the schools wanted to add behavior specialists. And great plan. Didn't get the Notice of Grant Award until, I think it was January last year. Don't quote me on the exact time. But so our schools were waiting on those positions and only I think two of the three schools were able to get one right away. So we were, we wrote it back in this year and, and they're all up and running with it right now. But, but that's that dance with it. It's, it's difficult.
So I, I know it looks bad because we lay off, but when we hire these individuals on Title I funds, are they well aware of, hey, this is funds that are strictly for a year?
No, it's not posted like that. It's posted as a grant-funded position.
Yeah.
A grant-funded position, but you can't give them like a timeline. This is a year-by-year basis or you can't do that?
It depends on the grant, but all of our grant positions are posted as this is a grant-funded position contingent on securing continuing funding.
Okay. So in other words, when they say you're laying off more people, I mean that kind of.
Right. And that, that's what happened.
That's a misconception we're getting as well.
And that happened a lot with our leads money. We got a lot of leads money. We had a lot of positions that were attached to the leads money. Those positions, they knew that they were temporary, for lack of better words, they were temporary. We knew that the funds, it wasn't like Title I where you pretty much it's every year you get it. As long as I've ever known, we've always gotten title funds based on your school population. But leads money we knew was a designated period of time. And when the money was gone, the money was gone. And so we hired several, I, I can give you a perfect example. We hired 18 Michael permanent subs, Dr. Q. No, 18 permanent subs. And let me tell you, when those permanent subs were gone, we got beat up. We got beat up hard because they were so valuable. I get that. But at the same time, we knew that that was money that was used for a short period of time. And we knew that there was going to be an end date, which we called the cliff. And there was also some ESSER funds that we used to put in some social workers, school social workers and things like that.
Nurses.
Yeah. And so, you know, yeah, it's a good point that it's, it's easy to, it's really easy to say, but then the community doesn't necessarily understand that. And, and it's rightfully so because they become part of your community, part of your fabric of your school district. And, and our permanent subs were very invaluable and the, the schools really, you know, relied on them. And to just not be able to fund any of them because they were cut out of a grant is very challenging.
So moving forward and trying to build transparency with the board and the community and everybody. So when we get funding, not to get into names and all that kind of stuff, but are we able to be like, hey, we were able to secure or we got leads funding. So we were able to hire 18 substitute positions, but we want to just let the community know we're bringing folks in for this, but there is a term limit. There's an end date.
I, I feel like we said that at probably 10 board meetings.
I will tell you that from the moment, my very first moment on this board, the CFO, the superintendent, that it was noted at every flipping meeting.
We actually had just ESSER and then leads money like.
Expiate.
Yeah. No, we just had that sheet that we gave you account monies that say here, this is how much.
The population watching board. I'm just throwing that.
Exactly. And then we do.
It's a question. I'm just asking.
We do, we do board minutes. Mrs. Dennis does a very nice job with creating board minutes. It has all the links. So you don't have to read the whole thing. You can just go to where your interest lies. So we do that and that goes out to everyone. And actually our community can go online to our page and they can actually link up and they could get it even if they're not, don't have a student in the school, if they just want information on the school district in and of itself, they can actually sign up for every one of our news releases. So, so that, that's something that people can read that information to be more informed and not just have to feel like they have to sit through a board meeting.
I, I, can I just ask one question? What are the three biggest things that fast forward a year from now that would help get us out of this? Obviously I hear the blueprint, obviously like when I'm looking at the line items, like I'm looking at salary enhancements, things like that. But like, will we continue to be in this cycle until something like big happens? Or increase state revenue or decreasing the requirements of the blueprint? Like what's the long-term plan to get out of this?
Great question.
Like, like what are three big things? Cause I like.
You need money.
Yeah. No, no, I, I get that. I mean, big time. But I'm saying like what, what's like, you know, they always say you can't eat elephant all at once. Like what's one of the biggest things that we could tackle? And I'm not saying because it's going to happen overnight, but like what's one of the biggest things that we could lean towards to try and? Like, is it, like, I don't, I don't want to do this for year after year after year because I can see where it's happening. But it's like we're, we're a dog chasing our tail at this point. So like.
We don't want to do any more furloughs.
That's what I'm saying. So like what? What, if we keep going down, it's like the definition of insanity, but I see the numbers. I'm not arguing with the numbers. Then it's just not there. But it's like, what can we do to like, what's a? I guess I just want to know like, okay, great. This is what we have to do right now to stop the bleeding. But like, what's the long-term plan? And even if it's not the plan, what are the micro steps to get to the plan? And I'm not an accountant. So like, I'm like, I'm asking, because I feel like it's a very real question of like, what can we do if it's a matter of, you know, I, like, I can get my head around how they possibly might reduce, you know, the state funding because of the thing that's being voted on. Like that makes sense to me. And if the community and us can get involved with trying to talk to our legislators to try and stop that, cool. That's a plan. I'm just thinking, what are things like that that we could do to really impact a couple of different things that would help bring more money into the county?
Well, one thing is that consistently our insurance has gone up every single year, basically 8%. Maybe slightly less, like seven and a half, maybe slightly more like 10 this year.
This health insurance.
Health insurance. And our employees have the best health insurance in the state of Maryland because of, not only is it a great plan, but their percentage that they pay is, is a lot less than, than some of our colleagues throughout the state. So we put in a new partnership with Marathon Health and that is an ability for us to, to fix costs for healthcare. And so the more people that we have that are successfully using Marathon Health, the more we'll be able to predict and then control costs, not, control meaning not for them to continue to go up. They're not going to reduce them. We know that's not going to ever happen, right? We know that.
Put the brakes on it a bit.
But it's going to put the brakes on it. That is, and we're at about 25% right now. We need to get to more like 35%. We're also looking at adding more partners on, because we do partner right now with the county. I don't know if you know that or not, but we do party, we do participate with the county in that. So that's, that's one thing is to continuously grow that opportunity that's exclusive for our employees, which is a huge benefit because they don't pay any co-pays. And so we have employees who don't pay anything for their insurance because they are an individual. And up until last year, they, our individuals didn't have to pay anything towards their premium. And if they use, utilize, ever so I, they have no co-pay. So I don't know what other organization you could go where you would get that benefit. That's a very good benefit. So trying to control that, right? That's one thing we can do. Another thing is that the, the blueprint, the initiatives within the blueprint just have to be funded at a higher level. That's the bottom line. The state has to come up. And, and if we go back and I encourage every board member to, to review, one of our commissioners took the time to really talk about the blueprint, talk about the history of the blueprint. And I, I believe that Carrie, Mrs. Dennis sent out the link to the board members. I encourage you to go back and listen to that over and over again because he does an amazing job of articulating what the blueprint and funding promised us and what we're actually getting. And what they promised us is very far off from what we're getting. And if they gave us what they promised us, we wouldn't be in this position right now.
I guess it's like, I just get, I, I just look at it from, I just don't want to see the teachers consistently getting the short end of the massive stick.
Like that's. And I ask you that, what, what are they getting the short end of? Because their salary enhancement package is incredible and so is their benefit package. So are you referring to class sizes?
Uh, I, for certain schools, I think certain schools' class sizes, I do think that from, again, not a teacher, based on what I'm hearing from them, it's like, I guess when they got their, their contracted amount and then the furloughs, it basically they didn't get it. So it was like they didn't get the raise or the step or the increase that they were hoping to get.
And we can share a specific, we can share with you, like we can, we have them. We can take a five-year teacher, a 10-year teacher, a 20-year teacher. We can take a five-year teacher, a ten-year teacher, a twenty-year teacher and offer that to you, and that's not accurate. So we can provide that. So that you actually have that information. Did they get um, what they would have without the furloughs? Obviously not, right? Cause furloughs took away from them. But did they make more money than they did last year? Yes.
So they did get an increase?
They did.
Okay.
They did. And I can, as I said, we have that information at a five-year, ten, I think we did five, ten and twenty.
Admittedly, the, 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 the ones that didn't see much of an increase at all were the folks that were at the top of the scale that didn't get a step increase. Because of the furloughs. But um, other folks lower on the scale, they, they would have gotten.
What was the average increase? Was it based on their current pay, or was it bringing them all to a flat?
So with, I think, I'd have to go, I haven't looked at that actual number, but I think the average like a teacher that's kind of in the middle of their scale, around seventy-five thousand dollar salary. I think the raise last year with step and the cost of living adjustment prior to the f- furlough was somewhere around a six and a half percent increase. Does that sound about right?
That's right.
Dr. Noel?
Yeah.
So a six, so if you do about, well, I mean, so we could, I could, if you want me to
Right.
Crunch the number, I could. But it is, but it is an increase um, for everyone.
And it, in the commercial world, it's three and a half to four percent, not six.
Had they gotten one before? Like, did they get one every year?
Getting one every year.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think there's been two years in the history that we could go back and look where they did not get a um, step. Um, but subsequently, in, not since I've been here, but subsequently, they made up one, I believe, of those two steps. Um, but as I said, that's like a long history of negotiating with our um, bargaining units.
I guess my fear as a parent, I worry that this is going to negatively impact, not selfish, but like, the kids. Like, I just don't want there to be a, you know, that, where there is thirty kids in a class and things like that, because I know that that does have an impact on them. And I don't know how teachers do it. I can't deal with my own two children half the time, so.
I can share with you too. Um, you can go right online and we can give it to you, where you can go compare and see salary bases for every single district in the state of Maryland. You can actually see where our teachers fall.
I would love to see that.
Be very impressed of where we are.
And again, you only hear the information that's given to you, and I don't necessarily know where to do a deep dive to find that, but I would love to see that. Cause I really don't know how they get their increases and how, uh, from what I have understood was they they got a step and then they didn't get it with the furloughs. And I just was like, oh, that's just, that's a broad deal.
But you know, it was the entire district that was.
But I, and I understand that they, by doing that, they prevented losing teachers, right? Like, they all took the hit collectively, which.
Staff members, and actually at that point, it wouldn't have been teachers, it would have been our support staff.
Say that again.
So at that point, it wouldn't have been, because of the notification of when we got the information of our funding base. Um, because it's so late, there's a contractual responsibility where a teacher, you can't furlough a teacher after a specific timeframe. So because that timeframe had lapsed, the only people that we could have furloughed would have been not furloughed, um, ripped. The only people that we could have rifted would have been our support staff. And, and if you think about that, that has twice the impact because of salary differentials. From what our teachers make, our, our cert staff makes compared to what our support staff makes. So essentially, it's nearly a two-for-one rough numbers, um, when you're making up funding for that.
So if we already know we're going into the next year and there's going to be a shortfall, are we looking at potentially the same thing as this year with furlough days? Versus cutting positions?
We have to talk about that as a board.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think I, in that part, in the presentation, I think I listed out some of the things that we were thinking, increased, you know, increase of.
I don't think we listed them.
Oh, we didn't list them.
We were just gonna talk.
We were talking about them. So yes, I mean, you have to think about it. And um, you know, lifting um, staff members, absolutely, is gonna be on the table, um, looking at every opportunity to, you know, to cut things. Like you suggested, like our center district and things like that. Um.
I, I wanted to go back, if I could, to Mrs. Eichler's one question about when does this stop, looking forward?
Yeah.
And I hope that you all, and I hope people watching hear this whole comment. Because I, I don't think it's gonna be necessarily popular, but like, when we, when we put the budget summary together and we are sitting down to contract negotiations, in a normal year, you would be working with the associations to look at what's a, what's a, what are fair increases for the employees that work with us that we can, we can appropriately give them and agree to within the confines of what the state and local government are planning to give us in our budget for the following years, right? That would be normal. So the commissioners are gonna give us five million dollars next year, so how do we work all of the increase as we're negotiating? We had an outside influence because of the blueprint. They told us we had to get to sixty thousand dollars. We had a floor we had to get to.
Which was eighteen percent over three years. So as teachers, they're getting an eighteen percent. Not, not.
What's starting for a teacher?
Sixty thousand.
No, before the blueprint, sorry.
Uh, fifty-three, I guess we were at, well, fifty-two, I guess we were at fifty-two something, fifty-two four maybe, I'm, don't quote me on that. Yeah, we were right around the fifty-two mark.
That's in this, that's in this county, but that's not in other counties.
And that, that mandate in the law is, that, that's the law saying, we don't care what the state allocation to your school system is. We don't care what the local county government is going to agree to give you. You are going to get your teachers to that point. And I please understand, I'm not here saying that nobody deserves that amount.
Absolutely not.
Um.
They deserve more.
But I, I'm telling you, when you talk about the underfunded blueprint mandates, that is an extreme.
Right. And I just, you know, eighteen percent over three years, that's, that's wonderful. We, we all agree that they deserve it. Um, but also the law leaves out any of your administrators and any of your support staff. But we, as a district, um, you know, and sitting across the table in negotiations, believe that our support staff and our administrator are just as important as our teachers are. And so you have to, the, the system also has to absorb that, right? Um, because you don't want to leave someone behind, especially as it relates to gaps. So if you leave your administrators behind and they don't get the same rate, so say administrators got one percent or two percent, and teachers got eighteen percent, then here's what happens. The teachers come up to the administrators, so now the teachers are making more than the administrators are making when it comes to a per diem. So our administrators work twelve months, our teachers work ten months, a hundred and eighty-nine days. So then they're making per diem more than your assistant principals or young principals. So that becomes a challenge, right, for recruiting. And so I think there's a lot of dynamics to this. There's a lot of tentacles, as we say, that we have to really consider all of the factors. No one's saying that they don't deserve it. We support our teachers and they do an amazing job. But it's the first time in my career that a law has mandated negotiations. Um, usually when you sit at the table for negotiations, you come to the table with a concept of what can we afford? We were forced to um, enter into something that we didn't know that we could afford. And as it relates to furloughs, that's a one-time thing. That six and a half percent increase will stay with them. Consecu-, will build upon that. So that's only gonna grow from year to year as they move in. So they got six and a half percent this year. Okay, they didn't really see all of that money right in their pocket, but next year, that's six and a half percent still there. I still gotta pay for it.
Is it still gonna increase our deficit to like?
Yeah, that's where that four million dollars comes in here.
And every year it grows.
Yeah.
What's, what's the increase? So the first one was six and a half percent, what's, what's?
It's every year. It's eighteen percent over three years, essentially. So it's like six to six and a half, depending on what year.
Who all was actually in the negotiations last summer with?
Board does not participate.
So why is that scenario there?
That's, that's the case in the state of Maryland, that the board members do not. You, you actually designated a, a negotiation team. And um, and, and, and guide that team in where the board wants to go. Um, the, the the various different bargaining units also have an opportunity to have X amount of seats at the table, and they decide who's gonna be on their team. They also um, come with their M S E A rep who guides their discussions as well. Is that law?
Yeah. And, but the board has the opportunity, you know, you get, uh, during closed session, one of the uh, topics that we typically talk about is collective bargaining, and that's where the board has the ability to set parameters and give directives to the negotiating team who are actually sitting down with the negotiating team for the union. Um, but yes, that is, that is the law, where uh, the law mandates that the public employer and the union designate teams. And only specified people can be on those teams uh, in advance to conduct negotiations. But, you know, you get updates.
Or can't designate a single individual to be on that team?
You can, you do.
No, you do. And actually, you approve the team.
So I'm saying, did they?
But you want one of us on the team?
No, you can't have a board member.
No, board members aren't on the team.
I can't be on there either, just FYI. I mean, like, I'm a board member, so I can't be on it either.
I talked about the open. Does that change? When we had talked about doing everything in open, and then right after that, um, Rochelle said they had made a law that no more collective bargaining and open, like, does that have anything to do with?
The law changed over the summer to require that collective bargaining negotiations take place enclosed. That's, this is all from the new agency. Well, the new agency that was created a little over a year ago, called the Public Employee Relations Board, uh, consolidated. It is, is one board that handles public negotiations. Uh, it's a consolidated board, and it basically swallowed up three boards that existed prior. The Public School Labor Relations Board, the State um, Higher Education Labor Relations Board, and the State Labor Board. Those ceased to exist and all got swallowed up into what's now the PERB. The PERB promulgates regulations and that, the, those regulations are where these rules, and, and the statute, which the legis-, the legislature created, which created the PERB. Those are the laws that we're discussing right now, which require that uh, the public school employer and the union designate team members, that the negotiations take place enclosed. That was a reg that came out. Um, so that's the kind of background to all this, of what Dr. Salins, you know, accurately shared just now. But, you know, again, the board is, should, can and should be deeply involved in negotiations through uh, getting updates from the team in closed session, providing directives and parameters to the team in closed session. Um, and, you know, when that happens, you, that's your, enclosed, that's your opportunity to ask questions, say, hey, these are our priorities, these are the limits. Things like that.
So not that we can make changes right now, but these people, are they individuals that have been on boards at this level? Cause we approve the budget, we're trying to do stuff at the board. Would that not be privy for individuals that even, like yourself, you can't be on the board either, but would it not be privy to be in the negotiations?
To, in negotiating, wait, I'm sorry, you're the negotiating team?
Correct.
So typically, the negotiation team is your, your, typically, your HR director is your chief negotiator. Sometimes in the bigger districts, they have an attorney full-time on staff that either is there in negotiations, sometimes will be the, the chief negotiator, sometimes will just add counsel to the chief negotiator. And then typically, it's your executive team members, um, that sit. And then you, you have a person who takes notes. That's usually somebody from HR department, um, so that everything can be accurately captured as they negotiate back and forth. You wanna make sure that you're capturing those things correctly. And a principal or two, depending on um, which bargaining unit it is. Um, so we, we've had a high school and an elementary principal that has sat on the majority of them, not the ones for bus drivers, but sit on the ones for your support staff, your um, even your admin staff. Um, so.
And then when that contract or that agreement comes to the board for approval. So the board went and approved, that was all approved just last year.
Correct.
For that eighteen percent raise and everything.
For the three years, yes. And that, that was for four out of five of our bargaining units. Now, we do have one that comes open this year. Um, correct, Sid? Mr. Pender?
That's the.
Bus drivers?
That's the LLC.
The LLC comes open this year.
Yeah, totally separate.
But we have three-year contracts for everybody else.
And no way am I saying this happened recently. I'm, this is just saying, what if the directives and the guidance from the board is not being relayed in the negotiations? Like I said, this is no, I'm not saying this happened, I'm just throwing, hypothetically speaking, what if that is happening? And there's agreements and those directives, and nothing's getting relayed to, in these negotiations?
Well, the board shouldn't approve the contract if they haven't felt that they were a part of that. Um, and you can go back and look, at least since we've been here. Um, you'll see negotiations on every single closed agenda for a very long period of time, as you um, are constantly getting updated. Even, even if you have a work session, typically, you'll have a closed session just to talk about negotiations.
Once negotiations are open, it's on every agenda. And ultimately, the contract comes to the board to sign, to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it has to have a vote carry, so it has to have at least three votes to carry.
And the reasoning why, this, we could probably talk about this another time. I was just, I'm curious why they got away from the open, what the reasoning behind it, but we can discuss that.
We've never.
Off topic. I'm not saying here, not us, but I'm saying like.
I can just say real quick, it's always been a prerogative of the uh, public agency, because the public agency is the one that is subject to the Open Meetings Act, whether or not those negotiations take place enclosed or open, and there's case law for that. But um, actually, that was the subject of a recent case before the PERB. And then after that, and the PERB, basically, that's exactly what the PERB said. It's the prerogative of the um, public agency, not just public school systems, but other public agencies that are a subject to this law. And then like, I don't know, if the timeline, it was like a month or weeks after that decision came out, the PERB adopted new regs, and I'm actually looking at it now, just for your reference. It's in COMAR. So when I say COMAR, that's a regulation. The Maryland Code is statutes that the General Assembly enacts. COMAR fourteen point thirty point thirteen point oh one. This is the um, in the section of regs governing the PERB. That's where it says that the negotiations take place in closed sessions. So they kind of enacted a rule in response to a dispute between another school, another school system in the state and their union about whether or not negotiations should take place in open or enclosed. And uh, in response, and, and ruled in favor of the school system, but then said, you know what, we're gonna make a one rule for all. So, um, but yeah, good question. And I guess, you know, negotiations haven't come up because you're not in the midst of it right now.
Most districts are actually negotiating right now. Um, but because we have a multi-year contract, that's why we're not currently in the midst of negotiations. So typically, we would be doing like a negotiation update or whatever at every meeting, but we're not. Um, this is really what we, oh, A and S is too. I misspoke on that. A and S contracts two years, but support unit one and two and three are all three years. Um, my apologies.
So actually, this is just the information that we had to share with the board this evening to give just a start. This was the only document that we really did want to kind of get back, just because it was so unfinished and, and still in drafts. But certainly, hopefully, you'll be able to utilize that information.
So looking at this piece, and right now, it's eight million dollars. Without any other updates, without any other changes, that's the number that we need.
No, that's not accurate. Um.
I know this is just a start, that's where we're, that's where we're at with the start.
So, well, I think we need to consider um, the, the five million that we put in as a place marker if the board wants to take that out. Because that would, would increase this number by, by five. And then also, remember all the holes right here.
You have to be filled in.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So if we, um, based on what we did last year, can you guesstimate how much more above what we did last?
Do you want me to take the five out and the state money out? Or leave the state money in?
No, leave the state money in, but take out the five, cause we don't know that that's a guarantee.
Well, the state money, we don't know if that's guaranteed either. It's, well, uh, uh, you know, I mean, like, that's regardless, but we would just like to see where we're at with what, what we need, what's gonna be at. This is what I'm saying, because.
So last year, they came to us with um.
There's two separate numbers anyway, so regardless, you're gonna put it in there anyway, yeah.
I'm, and I'm, I'm telling you, this is very, this is hard, because you're kind of putting me on the spot. But if I had to put an initial number out there, it'd be twelve.
Okay. So last, so for the new numbers.
Dr. Hibler, any comment on that?
So, I, I, can I, I maybe speak to why the five is there and we feel relatively comfortable having it there now?
Okay.
Just because, you, you know, we do have the liaison meetings that, in the public, the public budget work sessions that were budget listening sessions is maybe a better way to describe it. The commissioners have had over the past few years. They've talked about the, for three years, needing to give the Board of Education an additional five million dollars. Saying that publicly, it's not a promise, you know, anything like that. But they, um, they have spoken about that, and it kind of continuously comes up. This would be the third year for that amount, and that's why we have that there now.
Actually, you know, Jack, at one point, you know, has shared publicly seven.
And it's still not a guarantee.
I mean, he does know.
He does.
He does know. He, he knows, um, and he has said seven. Um, and so, I mean, we've had a variation basically between a, a five million dollar conversation and a seven million dollar conversation that they've had in the public that we've listened to and, and captured. Um, so that's why we feel fairly confident that they are going to support us at five million. Mm-hmm.
Um, do either of you remember the three numbers from last year?
Mm-hmm.
So last year, for the new members, we got um, three scenarios for keeping. three scenarios for keeping the school system whole. One was the absolute positively, if we just get maintenance of effort, this is where we are. There was a middle number, which I think is the one we asked for, which was about nine.
Right, there was, it was five.
Right, five million.
We had anticipated a placeholder that they would support us at five. So it was five and then it was nine.
It was nine, seven. I don't know.
And I think it was twelve, four.
Twelve, four to keep every single person and every single thing flat. No furloughs, no risks, no anything, everything would go straight. And it was the board's decision to go for the nine. And that's what we were working towards. But between what didn't come in from federal and state and even though the commissioners went above and beyond, we were still short.
Right, so they did give us five and then once we went through the three, their three budget community meetings.
Yes.
They ended up giving us an additional one point two. So they ended up really giving us six point two.
Which is still about two something less than what we.
Yeah.
Two point eight less than what we needed.
Exactly, about three, yeah.
So.
I do have a question. So the budget book from last year that Carrie passed out. So when you compare this paper that you guys want back to the other one. So on the twenty twenty four for.
What page do you own?
As soon as you open it up, for page four fifty one. Under this one has health insurance placeholder. We have three point three million dollars for there. And in this one for this year, we have one point five million.
Yes, and that is because if you remember that there was a the insurance actually captured within the budget book was captured at a decrease of four hundred thousand, but it actually went up a million dollars. So we had to make up that one point four million in addition to the actual rising cost of of insurance.
Okay, so for the other items that are on here that are basically on the twenty twenty four, is there any way to calculate those? Like even if you, you know, add an extra five, ten percent or?
That's exactly where we are right now. So we've just really started the process and we're trying to pull together this for everyone tonight. And so we're literally just there. I know Mr. Pender is working with a lot of his things. He's waiting kind of on that couple of the ESMEC things that we talked about. He's tracking his heating and oil and then and then ultimately when he gets maybe in a better sweet spot, maybe in about a month, we'll come back and we'll hopefully have some targeted numbers with some increases.
Is there anything that you guys know of that is going to be a major change?
Yes, so we already know that our energy costs are going up fifteen percent and we already know that the health insurance rate increase is at ten percent. So that's accounted on here, but Mr. Pender doesn't have his final numbers right now, but he said likely by the end of next month he'll have them. So we hope to, yeah, all of these things here that aren't filled in, we hope to next time when we come to you have some additional information in those, but we didn't want to not bring it because we didn't have it all. We wanted to get a starting point tonight so that, you know, you guys could start thinking about wrapping your heads around it and just at least, as I said, get a starting point. And then this this document will constantly be changing, the summary page will constantly change as we get additional information on revenue, as we get additional information from the state, from our insurance, from all these different factors.
And based on your all's feedback too.
Right, of course, we'll bring it and you might say, you know, we don't, we don't think of this or that or we want more information on this item and so we can bring that and prepare that for you.
Just one question, the laptop lease I see from last year is three fifty four, six ninety two. And then this year there's like a lease. How long is that lease for?
So I can speak to both question or it's kind of a two party. Last, it's a four year lease, I believe, Mr. Pender, correct me maybe, but I think it's a it's a four year. The reason you see a large sum last year is because last year was the first year of the lease. So it went in, the first payment was three fifty four. It's going to be that fifty thousand dollars more this year than what it was last year across those categories.
And then, and that's for four years?
Yes, and I'm not sure how much it goes up the other two years off the top.
So this should be four oh four?
This, this is the second one, I think. I think last year that three fifty four was the first, so this is.
Fifty thousand dollar increase.
Correct.
Correct.
So it's four oh four this year.
Gotcha.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you said four for four. Sorry, I'm sorry. No, it's my fault.
Yes, that just reflects the increase.
Twenty five thousand dollars.
Right, not the actual whole payment.
And it's because the three fifty is currently in there.
Captured.
These are just the changes we're making.
Just the changes.
Up or down?
Up or down, right.
When is the drop dead date to have a budget completely finished, signed, approved, stamped, moved forward?
Well, typically the board would vote and approve a budget in March to go to the commissioners so that they can start to build their budget through the month of April. And then they hold their hearings in early May. And then they actually have built in a meeting to kind of summarize and pull all the budget together and tie up loose ends towards the end of May. And then in June, that first, second Tuesday in June, I believe, is when they vote on it. So now the last two years, they haven't used that May meeting and they have the second May meeting, meaning after the three hearings or opportunities for the community to engage. They haven't utilized that. I think they had a great idea of what they were going to do. They made some decisions and they did ultimately tell us very close to the very end of May, between the twenty eighth and thirtieth. I remember them sharing with us what our final number was going to be, which was the additional one point two for a total of six point two, so.
And we won't know the decision until the end of April on the decreased state funding with the blueprint stuff. So there is a big question mark still looming.
Yes, likely will not know that information. The end of session is typically in the middle of April. I think this year, I don't even know. It started on January eighth. If we track it out, it's ninety days, so. Right.
Are the commissioners aware that this is something that will affect our budget?
You mean the legislation?
The possibility that we are going to be.
Yeah, I send them the same articles like that I send you guys. I send to Todd and ask him to share them. And we do meet with them on a monthly occasion and they do hear what our needs are. And you know, we'll, next time we meet with them, we'll be sharing this information that we shared with you and making sure if they have any questions, we can follow up with that and help them to kind of track where we are.
So I have a couple of questions here and we're going to have to get into. I know we're talking about budgeting. I know we got whole numbers here and we're looking at a high level here. But I do believe we have to look in deeper in some aspects when we come into our spending, especially where we're at. Whether that's making a thousand dollar change here or ten thousand dollars here. I think we need to go into basic micro accounting and dive in deep and understand where all our spending is. I reiterated this last time and it's not the dive in.
You should be able to do that with the five year, the five year trend data is exactly why we provided that information for you. That that gives you the ability to personally go line item by line item and see where was budgeted and what actually, you know. So that if you have questions next time, you come and say, hey, I noticed this line item. Can we cut ten thousand dollars there? And give us an opportunity to respond and whether yes, we can or no, that's a state mandate or, you know, I mean, certainly some of some of our line items, you know, like specifically, I just off in my head athletics that has the the mandates for the AUDs, is that what they are?
AEDs, helmets, shoulder pads.
Shoulder pads and they have to be reconditioned and there's some things that we just don't have any control over that has to come out of certain line items. So but those are things that are good questions to ask and we certainly will provide whatever information you all need to make good decisions.
Some some questions that I've actually have come from teachers and other folks in the community that have asked me and we've talked about spending and such is how many individuals have, we'll say, business cards or purchase cards throughout the school district? And what is the typical annual cost that is put on these purchase, these credit cards? Who's tracking them? Who's approving the purchases with them? And do, can we see these card statements on what these individuals are purchasing? And what does it like, what does that amount to?
Okay, so that was like ten questions one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Stick with me. Stick with me. And so typically your building level people will have a we call it a P card, a purchasing card, a P card. Anyone, a lot of people in Sid's department have P cards such as maintenance, technology and things like that. What do they purchase on those cards varying things from, you know, equipment, things like that? If it's a smaller cost, even at the school level, it might be, you know, I need two replacement textbooks and I found them on Amazon and you're not going to do a PO for that. You're just going to order those types of things. So who who approves those? There's, there's several layers of approval through those. So they all get tracked through our finance department. Everybody has a different spending limit. They have a different spending limit per purchase and per day. So all of that is tracked and all of those permissions come through basically my office if they need to increase something or decrease something. So I don't, I think I have most of your questions, but but yes.
Are we able to see those statements monthly to see what is being purchased with them?
Yeah, I guess we could pull those. Is there a specific, you know, grade, grade band or a specific department that you want us to pull? Because to pull all of those would probably be pretty challenging for a department that's already, you know, as we know, we've talked about understaffed and we're trying to hire a new accountant right now and actually posting for a CFO position, so.
So each card, I'm going to ask how it works. Is each card assigned to each individual have a different account number to it?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we can see.
Do you want me to pull mine and give you that one just to start with and you can see what that looks like?
I would prefer to see a majority of them because each statement, I mean, I can go online to my, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to get contentious. I'm saying I can go online, click on my account and print out my statement.
Sure.
Like that's not a difficult task.
No, but it is time consuming when you do have a lot of, I mean, it is with you. It's just one individual, but to look at, looking at every principal.
Talking.
But we have, Sid, how many would you say you have in yours? I would say for.
Schools?
Well, just in my department, eleven maintenance, two comtech and myself.
And then the, every executive team member has one, every principal has one. Every, Mrs. Dennis, is it every administrative secretary also has one?
Most twelve month secretaries would have one.
Yeah.
So we're saying forty to fifty, is it not in the same bank or they are not tied to the same account?
Um JP Morgan.
So isn't that like a click? Shouldn't it be like, so whenever I have multiple accounts with the same bank, I log into the same thing and it could be all my different, say, credit cards or bank cards are all there. So you just click, print, back, click, print, back, right? I mean, it can't take more than twenty minutes to go and print all that, right? Twenty, thirty minutes? I mean, I'm just trying to see because I've been getting several questions and asked.
Questions that you've been getting, maybe you could share them.
We're asking, why do so many people have so many P cards and what is the reason behind it? Is there, is there a necessity for that many? And who's tracking the purchases because people have asked?
There's multi levels of approval, so nobody can just go out and buy something and not have it approved by by several layers in the in the actual system. So I have to go in. So for every time that Mr. Pender uses his card, I have to physically go in and look at every single purchase to see where, is it a legitimate purpose for that?
And I, I.
And so I mean, you know, there are different.
Is it a necessity that many people, all the assistants have, the secretary, like?
A lot of times the, you know, there are such small limits that, you know, for instance, typically it's for when they travel, to be honest with you. So our principals really don't use the cards very often unless they're traveling. And it is easier to travel when you have a P card so that you're not kind of waiting on someone else or having to take a check with you and which is, you know, just more challenging. So yeah, the principals don't use their cards very often. The administrative secretaries use their cards typically for MOI, which is your materials of instruction. Your supervisors typically use them for both materials of instruction and for travel. Mr. Pender, his, his folks use them often because they are out there in the field and they need, you know, cord for this or, you know, this type of whatever replacement.
I can only speak for my department, but it, once it comes in, I have to, I look at it and see where it is coded to which account. So all of the accounts drop down and I'm just making this up. Okay, is it Churchill Elementary School? Does it fall into the maintenance category? Does it fall into like HVAC, you know, is it assigned into those are right count numbers? Years ago, finance got tired of like, and I'm just using this as an example of getting all the invoices from like, say, you know, a local hardware store of, okay, we're going to write a check out for that. You know, using your P card for that for a lot of ours are smaller items that, you know, are necessary to have. You know, a belt because on a motor, you know, you need that belt, those types of things. But each one of them that comes in, like I said, for my area, I have to code in there, you know, does it fall within this category? Which schools is it at? It has to all be coded correctly.
And then where does this fall in the budget?
What, excuse me?
Where does this spending fall in the budget?
It falls all through the budget. So like I said, what just with Sid, it falls into several different categories. So that's what he just said, like there's a dropdown and he has to determine what category does that go to? What is the account number he's going to use for that?
The accounts, the chart of accounts in the P card system match exactly.
And it's interesting because a lot of things that we do, even like I'm thinking as a principal, like if I want to secure a field trip and I have to do like a down payment for that trip or whatnot, even though those monies might have been raised, you know, from the PTA or something like that, for us to be able to secure it, we have to have a P card. We have to have a credit card in order to secure that. We can't do it. A lot of places won't do checks anymore, believe it or not. I mean, and if they do, sometimes they charge you more if you're not able to secure it electronically, so.
Another question is, when they go on travel, say they're going on training somewhere or something like that and you say they should use their P card, correct? Do they not give you a preemptive travel?
They do. They have to fill out a form. It has to go through four different signatures.
Because we do the same thing with the government. Like every time I went, I had like my per diem rate from my hotel, my my travel costly.
And getting approved before you.
Getting approved before.
Before you make the reservations and all that.
And as minimal as we can, we, so say for instance, if they're going to a conference for two days and there's a per diem rate of food, we try to front load that so that they don't have to use their P card. So we try to minimize the use of P cards at all costs. So typically those P cards are not used for food and for things. They're used for the hotel, which you've already had a reservation for, which has already been approved. I met several layers before they even go.
Okay, so it's a, a lot of these questions is because I'm trying to gain the knowledge on it.
Sure.
These aren't accusatory by any means. So moving forward though, can we see what the expenditures are? Are they bringing receipts with them?
Well, it depends. A lot of times they have receipts, but as I said, sometimes it's front loaded, so they don't have to have a receipt at all. But if they're using it, it has to have a receipt attached.
They should still be bringing back a receipt for proof, right? When you pay for a hotel.
They have to have their receipt and it has to show that the taxes aren't there, so they have to use our tax exempt information.
And the, the, the charges on the P card can't move through the system without receipts being attached.
Correct. They won't get reimbursed for it unless they have a receipt.
I'm hoping that's.
So it's tied to the person if they use it. So it's like our government travel cars. So if I go and buy something at Best Buy, throwing it out there, and it doesn't get approved, I'm liable and it's my credit.
That's exactly right.
So they're the same exact way.
That's exactly right. Or, I mean, in a rare occasion, I've seen like where somebody used their card by accident because it's in their wallet and they're like, oh, my gosh, they have to pay a check to the organization for, they have to pay us a check to make sure that it's paid for through them personally, so they're liable for it.
So between just seeing some of the expenditures, what those are and what they're approved for and some of the spending.
Sure.
I would request to be able to see.
So you want every single P card in every single month from what month?
Not every month.
Okay, so what?
Just, just, we'll start with the most previous, the most recent, say November, because January, December.
So you want every single P card line item statement for the month of November?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to see what's going on, just, just peace of mind. And then also looking, as we mentioned before, a request for purchases and expenditures that are going out in the month too, so we can start gaining a better understanding of what expenditures are happening within the school district on a monthly basis. I know we can sit here and look at numbers, but I want to, it'd be, sometimes those things fluctuate. And I know we're taking into account, but when we get, we're getting down to the nitty gritty, we're talking about furloughs. I want to be able to transparently and confidently speak to our community and not saying that you guys aren't. But from my peace of mind, look at the differences, look where we're at, look what we can do. We have this to go line by line, but I want to go in there and see what the fluctuations happen and what.
You want to see a copy or you want documentation of every bill that's been paid in the month of November? Is that what you're requesting?
I would like to see all the expenditures of.
Every bill that, every bill that's paid or, I mean, what do you, I don't know.
Did you say different schools at first? I, I don't know.
I didn't say, I mean, we can start with just the high schools. I mean.
Oh, you just want that? Okay, so you want.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking. I'm kind of trying to get some like understanding because I want to be able to see where we're at with, say, hey, your monthly bill for, you know, the gas. What's, what's a fluctuation? What increases are we seeing, you know, per month basis or the electric? Or we had an expenditure to say put up new scoreboards or we had this. I just want to start seeing where we're going with expenditures, what we're doing. So if there is. I just wanna start seeing where we're going with expenditures, what we're doing. So if there's some things that we see that is, might be in miscellaneous that continue to happen, that just keep falling, that people have overlooked, maybe we catch up and be like, hey, this expenditure, hey, this is one of those things that we can, we can pull out that is a thousand dollars a month. I know that only comes out to twelve grand, but that's a step in the right direction. I'm not saying anything bad's going on or we're missing or doing anything on purpose, but there's things that can fall into different categories that just easily gets left or not seen. But if we start getting fresh eyes on it, maybe somebody picks up on that and be like, oh, well, yeah, that's been going on for ten years now, but that's something that we could probably get rid of that's a thousand dollars a month. And then that one and then this one. I'm just trying to go in and so we can confidently tell the union, tell the, the community that we've done everything and try to have gone through every nook and cranny of the budget and our expenditures and what we're putting out in our taxpayer dollars to fulfill the budget and be on budget and not have to go into extreme measures.
And I'm, and I'm absolutely happy to provide all of that for.
I'll come sit down in the office. It doesn't have to be here. I'll take time out of my day and come and sit down and look at the expenditures with each principal and each staff member. I mean, I'm all for using my time to come, I'll sit down, I, we can set up a meeting.
That's, that's really actually probably not appropriate. I think Adam would agree with you.
I would say, you know, go through the, the administrat- you know.
Right, right. I'm just saying, I would. I'm, I'm throwing that, I'm not saying I'm going to. I said, I would be willing to do that.
And I, and I completely appreciate where you're coming from, especially as a new member and just trying to gain this information. And I'm happy to provide all of it for you, but I also just wanna pose the question, then what is my staff here for? Each one of my staff members has a role and a responsibility to uphold. They, they literally, tha- that's their job is to ensure um, that we are spending appropriately. That's my job. You char- you charge me with that job as a superintendent to instill in my staff, monitor and hold my staff accountable for doing their day-to-day operations of this, the organization. And for us to provide to the board so that they can go behind my staff and say, I wanna see every credit card statement so I can review every single line item that has been done, I, I, I think, um, is a little disrespectful to my staff, to be honest with you. It's a little disrespectful to say that this board is gonna look line item by line item to see if they can help. Um, when I do think there's a little bit of different motivation there. Um, and I'm happy to do it. I'm, I'm happy, no, actually, I really feel like we have experts and I'm not an expert in everything and I don't claim to be an expert in everything. And that's why I have hired appropriate staff members.
You're saying fresh eyes and other people to help and understand and gain a, gain another.
Happy to do it.
Can I get, can I say that?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the superintendent through her administrative team runs the day-to-day system. You all provide oversight, right? The, you know, the board members, uh, you know, elected officials don't necessarily come in and run, you know, work here every day. But your job is to come here and ask questions. And so you have a question about the P cards. You know, the, the right way, you know, what I, what I would see as an appropriate avenue for getting that information is saying, you know, next month, I'd like to see a report with that information. So rather than you, you know, basically work here, you know, and, and review accounts, say, I wanna see a report next month of the P card transactions for that month and then, you know, have a finance report presented to the entire board. That way, the entire board is getting the same exact information as, you know, each member is getting the same exact information that every other member is getting. You're, um, allowing the administration to gather that information and present it to you. And then you all can, when you're presented with that information, you can ask questions and say, here's recommendations that we have, here's fixes that we wanna see. Or, you know, thanks for that information. I feel better now. Um, that's the, kind of the, the, the right way to exercise, um, you know, the oversight role while letting the, the folks who work here every day, you know, do their job. I'm not saying you shouldn't do that. You, you know, if you want to, you absolutely should. It's just, um, going through the, you know, we wanna see this presented at a meeting, we wanna report at a meeting, I want, and, and if it's all the, you know, if it's a quarterly statement of P cards, then it's a quarterly statement of P cards and get that. And, but that way you all have that same information rather than one particular board member coming in and going through it where that leaves the other board members out and not.
I'm not trying to leave anybody out.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just, it's just a con- natural consequence of one board member coming in and, you know, going through, which you can absolutely do. It's just for the benefit of the entire board, having, saying, administration, we wanna see a report on this next month. That way the entire board can consider it, all operating from the same playbook. That's what I would suggest.
And I'm not, this isn't disrespect to you by any means. This is as a board, we're, we're not trying to undermine your.
I just feel like, you know, we do hire people to do a job and.
Right.
And I got you.
You know, I think that's really something that we need to.
But we're in a budget scenario.
I, I clearly understand.
All I'm trying to do is help. And what I'm saying, I'm not trying to undermine anybody in the school district saying they're not doing a job. That's not what I'm asking. I'm just trying to come in and help. And what I'm trying to do is come in and help. And I understand what you're saying, oversight, that's fine. And you said, this is why the board hired you and you did your expected.
That's mine.
That's fine, I got it. Understand. But we were also hired, or not hired, but elected by the taxpayers, I know we're all taxpayers too, to oversight and understand the budget and try to fix the budget to be on track where we're not in a deficit. So at the same time, that's why we were elected. I understand this is your job, this is their job, this is why your staff's here and they're experts and they're fantastic. I am not taking anything away from them. So it is zero disrespect in any way, shape or form. But all we're trying to do is just figure out a way. And if we just come up here on monthly meeting or weekly meetings and only see reports on a monthly basis, that's not, we can see different things and we can see the numbers here, but that's, to me, that's not putting our best effort. So if we can collaboratively work together in some way where we can, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, but if we can find a better way to dive into these numbers in a deeper scale to see what's going on, that's all I'm trying to accomplish. I'm not trying to sit here and go in a different manner and go by myself to sit there and by myself here and go a- away from the board or undermine you in any way. I'm just trying to do my due diligence as an elected official to take this budget and make sure we're on par with the amount of money that we're getting, so we're not hampering our education of our students and our staff and educators taking days off that are unnecessary. So if that's what comes to it, I know you guys are doing your best, but, but I also see other eyes, fresh eyes that don't look at it every single day, sometimes see things differently than people that do see it every day. That's all I'm saying. Whether I went about doing that the right way and making those requests, my bad. All I'm saying is I think we need to find a way to collaborati- collabilit- to work together, that word.
That word.
Better.
What I'm hearing, yeah, what I'm hearing is just that the board wants more detail. You know, the, i- is that fair? Yeah.
But we also have, you just said till March. That's, that's a month and a half away. So if we wait till next month to see, they, I'm just saying, we need to progress with this quicker. And I'm, I'm not, I know you guys are busy. I'm, I'm just saying, we have to find a way to come together to figure this out. And I know that it's, you, you're on, you're, it's your last time here, you wanna leave on a good foot, or a good note. We wanna take care of this so we can progressively move forward with the next superintendent as well.
So just.
I don't see anything, and there's nothing wrong with any of that. And I, I just think that.
To summarize, we're gonna provide a report to the board that has every P card transaction in the month of November. And then we're also going to track every expenditure that is spent out in the same month.
Think if the, so, well, I just wanna make sure. The board is giving a directive to the administration to report back. I'm just trying to make sure we're all, you know.
Yeah, I wanna make sure I know what my homework.
Gives directives to the administration to report back on, with certain information. So you have the information you need to make the decisions, the hard decision that you're gonna have to make. So the board should give the administration clear directives of what they wanna see, what information they wanna see. So that sounds like it's the P card transactions.
Right.
And a more detailed expenditure report.
And every expenditure in the month of November.
Right, that's ex- and that's exactly how this process works.
Yep, gotcha.
Expenditures, can we just do the final quarter? Are we pushing the limits on that? The expenditures, final quarter, um, of twenty twenty-four?
What I, what I was gonna show is that in a normal month, at the first board meeting, we would post a summary expenditure report.
Okay.
And a, a more detailed expenditure report. And let me, if you, if, if you're in board docs, you could go back and look at like the December meeting. Or I'm in November's for some, I don't know why I picked November.
I'll pick November because that's the one.
What are you looking for?
Well, so if you would look at like the November sixth, open session, November sixth. And if you would go to information items, it's eight point oh four. So there are two reports there. And these weren't my reports, but I'm gonna just take through. So the, the first one is high level by category. So if you open it, you will see what the original budget amount is. That month's period expenditures, how much is, how much is encumbered for the rest of the year? And then how much that would leave available? If you go to the next report, it's basically the same thing, except it gives you like the different series within those main categories, like you have here. Um, it, it's still not extremely detailed, but it, it doesn't go down to line by line, but you can see in each category, this is how much was spent this month in salaries. This is how much is in contracted services. And if you see a large sum in a certain month, you would have the team here that could potentially explain why you saw that. I don't know if that's a good place to start. I, I wanna tell you why, uh, we did not present that last week. And it is because we do have the furloughs. The furloughs started hitting the accounts between that November, December time. I wanna assure the public that's watching and our employees that are watching, the furloughs are calculated properly in the paychecks that employees are receiving, the people around in this room as well. They are not hitting the system correct. We have a call in with Power School, our system, our, our, um, e-finance, it's a Power School company to help us accurately, um, account for how the furloughs go in the system. What our staff did, and again, I'm not the CFO, so I'm a messenger right now, but, um, what our staff did is if, if a person had a fifty thousand dollar salary and then their, their furlough was two thousand dollars, they went in and put a negative two thousand dollar salary in there, assuming that that would track an e-finance to a net forty-eight thousand. For whatever reason, it actually gave them an additional two thousand dollars. So I'm happy to bring these reports back. I, I'll email you them for this past month so you could see them too. What I'm telling you is that every place there's a salary, it's wrong.
Okay.
So all the other stuff is, is tracking right, but that's why we didn't bring it this month. And it's just, it's just why we try to sort that out. And what we're being told, I believe, if I've followed the string of emails properly, is that we, we weren't accounting for the furloughs on the, in the right place within e-finance. Um, and that's what they're trying to work through now. It'll go back, it, it'll need to be tested in the test environment. I'm sure you can appreciate this stuff now. Or, well, you know what I'm saying from your background, but once we can test it, show that it's working right, then it'll be updated. So happy to do that as long as everybody's okay when we present it and you see the salaries going over a hundred percent.
Can we get, can we get an up-to-date one of these then?
Yes.
That's what you're saying, you'd be happy to do it. But I, I mean, are you suggesting that you want something different than this?
Uh, no, I was looking for this in January and that's what, we didn't have it. And that's why I was trying to build it upon the budget. So this is similar to what I'm looking at. Um, outside of this, different, what type of, um, other expenses do you typically see outside of this? Are there expenses that pop up on a regular that we're seeing that typically, cause I know this is still kind of overhead. Um, are there other expenses that you see that might, that pop up regularly that?
If it's an expense in the operating budget, it's going to show up here. Um, this isn't gonna show you expenses that are articulated through your title grants or through other grant opportunities that we have. Um, but if it is an operating expense, it will show up in here.
Noted, okay.
So with the P card in with this, is that, is that a good s- start for now?
Yeah, for, that's, I'm just trying to get my, my feet dirty so we can start for one hundred percent, be a hundred percent accurate, so we can.
And I, and I do, you know, as I said, I, I hear that word transparency a lot and this is very transparent and we have consistently done these two reports every month unless we've had an error that we were like, okay, we gotta figure this out. Um, but we have consistently, I would hope that our board president and I would hope that our other member that have been a part of this um, has, have seen those reports every single month, um, every, literally every single month. So that, that, that is our way of, of what I believe to be transparent with the community to say, this is how much we budgeted for this. This is what we've spent to this point and, um, this is where we are kind of in this month of spending. And it does give the board an opportunity and we have had board members say, well, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand why we have a negative number here or why we have, you know, too much money here. It gives them an opportunity for us to talk through some things. Um, where we, where we might have some challenges on funding, um, in different categories, but, um, but happy to, to, um, accommodate.
Do you have your marching orders for the report?
I do. So I'm, we're gonna be pulling every P card, um, through the month of November and create a report for that. Um, so that they can see the categories that have been spent out, what line item they are attached to, meaning budget code wise. Um, and then just to update the most recent one, but knowing that we're still working on that, that, uh, presentation of salary. Um, is not quite accurate at this point.
So the reason why I asked that question is we've been going for quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
We have a couple more agenda items before we do anything else. Should we take a five, ten-minute break or keep going?
I think a five-minute break would be great.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to use the restroom if that's okay.
All right, at this moment, we're gonna adjourn for ten minutes, take a break and we'll be back. Thank you. Uh, let us, let us resume. Next topic, three point zero two, superintendent search discussion.
So, um, we, you know, in light of the news of Dr. Salin's retirement after, um, her many years of public service, we are now faced with the opportunity to engage any superintendent search. Um, we, I just went through one in neighboring county and so I have, I think, a very positive experience to bring with you about that. Um, what I was planning on doing tonight and then we'll, it's gonna, gonna leave it up to you about how you wanna handle next steps are present some options and a general timeline of what needs to happen. So, um, first are options. Would you wanna hear the options first or kind of our general time, timeline?
Surprise.
Options, our options are, the way I see it, and, um, and, and feel free to chime in with any ideas, are, um, to use uh, MAB, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, offers a superintendent search, uh, for a fee. Um, they have, um, consultants that are actually from the shore, uh, who do these searches, who have uh, many decades of experience individually and certainly combined, um, on the shore and in public education in Maryland. And they do the search and it's everything from, um, you know, all the logistics of the search, sourcing the candidates, putting the advertisements out there, basically hand, you know, handholding the board through the process. That was my experience most recently is using MAB. Um, and, uh, I would suggest if that's even a possibility of something that everyone wants to consider, that you, um, I, I or the board president and, and vice president can reach out to, uh, the MAB executive director to set up a, um, for them to come out and do a presentation and proposal to you all of what it looks like. Um, last year, uh, when, uh, neighboring county was going through this, just Kent, your neighbor to the north, I came out and did a public presentation at the first meeting in February. So we're right on track um, about what their services are and, uh, who is, who is going to be involved, what the potential costs are and, um, answered any questions that the board had. That's option number one. Option number two is to use a private search firm. So it's basically the same general process as MAB, but, uh, using a private um, executive search firm. Um, just anecdotally, I know some other districts on the shore have done that. I don't have any personal experience with that, but my, some of my colleagues do. Um, and I just couldn't tell you much more than that, but that's an option. Um, another option is to, um, not use a firm, not use a, a, a search firm to conduct the process, conduct the process yourselves. There's nothing in the statute that says that you have to use a search firm or, or a consultant. Um, it just, uh, you know, between making an application and circulating the application, putting the adver- the job vacant. putting the job vacancy announcement out there on different platforms and circulating it in, you know, trade journals at statewide, national level, depending on what you wanna do. Having the search firm in place to do all that is helpful. But you don't have to use a search firm, so that would be option number three. The so before I go on to the kind of general timeline, you have any questions about that? And at the end of this meeting, I would say if you want me to reach out to MAB and reach out to the private search firm that I know a colleague of mine has used and get them, get dates for them to come in and present to you. I would say let's do that as soon as possible. I know the next meeting that you all have scheduled right now is February 5th, is that right?
Yes.
So that would be an ideal time to do it.
Could that happen?
Absolutely.
Do we want that? It's free, right? Like they can come, they just come.
They'll come and talk to us for free, but everything else is gonna cost us.
But do they both come that night and present or?
Well, I'll have to check. I'm sure MAB could.
Milton probably, it would be Milton Mabel. He would probably not have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Just to better understand the cost and all that stuff.
They have a PowerPoint, they have, they do the whole thing. That's, you know, a service that they offer.
Is this something that would be done in closed session?
No, it'd be done in open.
Okay.
So then let me talk about general timeline. So here we are sitting at January 22nd, 2025. And I'll just share with you, ultimately, we have to make, the board has to make an appointment in June. Just because Dr. Salins' contract expires June 30th, you have to have someone sitting in place July 1 of 2025. So, so we're kind of working back from making that appointment at your June meeting for them to start and get, start on July 1. So we're here, we're here in Feb, let's say we're gonna start in February. You're gonna have a meeting and you're gonna hear from the search firms on, and what your options are with that. The, what would generally happen in February would be determining the process you're gonna use, hiring a search firm, if that's the avenue that you decide to take. Starting to get, my experience with MAB was that's when they started getting community input on characteristics that they wanna see in the applicants, strengths and weaknesses about the school system. Determine, and that's when we meet privately to determine parameters for salary and benefits. That's in February. And then in March, late February, early March, we should start thinking about reviewing that community input. And those are all, we're gonna gather input from the community through surveys. And that's something that this, that MAB would do and that I would hope that a private search firm would do as well. Finalize the parameters for the, for the, for the hiring, adopting criteria or characteristics that we learned from the community surveys and creating the application, the job announcement and what we're looking for. March, so that would be March. And then we start getting applications out end of March, early April. Hopefully getting, start applicant screening if we get, you know, a number of applications early to mid-April. Mid-April, applications come in. The search firm will do background checks, reference checks on those folks who apply and select initial interviews to be conducted with, you know, a pool of applicants. April, end of April, early May, second round interviews. Typically what happens is finalists are announced mid, end of May. You might have seen this happen with a few vacancies that occurred on the shore. There was Kent, Somerset had a vacancy that they just filled. I feel like one, there was one more on the shore that was just filled. Am I missing one?
Dorchester?
Yes, Dorchester. I just remember seeing Somerset announcing the finalists and Kent announced the finalists and things like that. Then typically the finalists come to the community and that's your opportunity to get community input. You know, have, do tours, get representatives from community organizations, whether that be chambers of commerce, professional associations, neighborhood associations, just different aspects of the community to come and send representatives in to, to meet these folks. And then final interviews with the board, again, all facilitated by the consultant. And then we select a finalist in June, hopefully early June, to allow for time to negotiate a contract with that person. So, you know, once we select someone, we hope that it goes through. We can't push it all the way to the end of June because we're gonna have to have that in place for July 1. So hopefully those contract negotiations go smoothly. That's something that I would assist with. And, and then hopefully we're sitting here July 1, having successfully gone through that process and you have a candidate that you all are happy with and they're happy to be here. That's like the overview of the process and how it works. You know, you'll probably, if you decide to have MAB come and present, they'll get into more nitty gritty of what that looks like. But if you followed along with just went up with, if you followed what happened in Kent, your neighbor just last year, that's basically what happened.
Is it safe to assume that we would because we do, like when I'm looking at the board meetings, March, April and May, it's gonna be two meetings that month. Like remember we talked about adding and is it easier to add on as we go or put them on and take them off? Like is it safe to assume with this on our plate?
Traditionally, we have two a month, except for when we're in budget season, then we have three.
Okay.
Or December, when we only have one, cause it's Christmas and holidays.
I guess, I mean, for my planning purposes, should it be safe to assume that we're gonna need? Cause right now, the current calendar doesn't have a second meeting for March, April, May.
We'll have to add one, we'll have to add those.
Okay.
So we can continue.
I think we're gonna need to maximize the time.
Yeah, so typically you'll, you know, cause you have other business that you have. We just spend a lot of time talking about a budget, so you're gonna be getting into, this occurs during the same time as your budget discussions take place. So it would likely involve additional meetings beyond your regular board meetings. Not a ton, but, but some. The other option that I did not mention before is if, is an interim and something to consider as well. 4201 of the education article, that's the law that says the term of the county superintendent is four years, begins on July 1. And that's where the February 1 date is where Dr. Salins, you know, announced that she is not a candidate for reappointment, that she's gonna be retiring. And, but the law does allow that if the county board is unable to appoint a county superintendent by July 1, the law provides that the county board shall appoint an interim county superintendent who serves until July 1 after the interim's appointment. So basically it's a one-year interim. So it is a way to buy more time. And I do recall that some county boards think at the beginning of the process, oh, well, you know, maybe we need to do interim, there's not gonna be more, you know, we need more time. But you're always gonna be left with this amount of time, no matter, you know, if you do it this year or next year.
And they can serve up to two years as an interim superintendent. Unless that law's changed, like in the last.
I see that they should, they serve until July 1 after the interim county superintendent's appointment.
I believe that they could appoint for another one-year interim term.
I'll have to, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, I think that's the way it used to be, but maybe it's changed.
Yeah. So let me just check our calendar. We have a February 5th meeting?
Yes.
See. I'll announce that later.
Okay.
Again.
So would you like me to reach out to MAB and get, see if they, or do you wanna do it?
If you could do the research firm, I'll do MAB.
The, the private search firm?
Okay.
I will do that. And I think, did you get contacted by one?
Oh yeah, there was another one that came in. Do you want, did I forward you that one?
I think you did.
Okay, so I don't know that everybody received it, but let me just tell you. There is a group that reached out. School Exec Connect, a nationwide executive search firm. So the word's out. So we're starting to get emails from folks.
So.
We wanna include them as one of the search folks, it's fine.
They have one Google review. They have a one-star Google review.
And this is something that, kinda like your first task.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner.
This is your first task is picking, you know, deciding how you're gonna go about the process. And then once you decide how you're gonna go about the process, then it gets rolling and then it'll, they'll pick up the timeline from there, they'll, they'll hold your hand through that process.
So I have a serious question. Is this accounted for in our budget anywhere? So this would be a cost above and beyond what we already have available.
So this isn't like the board line item of like where it says board expenses or it's not accounted for anywhere? Okay.
I don't wanna quote a price, a price because it's not my place to do it, but they will quote you a price. And I don't know, you know, we're sitting here a year later, I don't know what it's gonna be. But it is a cost. But they also provide a service, so.
Correct.
So I will, so I'll contact the private and Shannon, or Ms. Bent, you will contact Milton.
Milton, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for me?
On the process.
As we get deeper into the process, there will be, I think I alluded to this last meeting. As we get deeper into the process, there will be portions that take place in closed session under personnel. And there will be portions of the process that take place outside of the Open Meetings Act entirely. Well, I'll advise you all when we get to that. But, you know, a lot of it does involve public community input. It's a public, it's a very significant decision for the public. And so, you know, a lot of it does take place out in open.
So I, I know we have all gotten, you know, from the past couple of months about the superintendent search and community input and having committees and stuff like that. That's, that's completely different than, you know, the, the public gets to meet these people and different stakeholders. But as far as having the public pick the superintendent, that's ultimately the, the boards.
The board is statutorily responsible for appointing the superintendent. How you go about doing that is up to you all.
It's our only job.
And just to really review, I mean, to review, they can use a private search firm.
Right.
They can use MAB as a search firm. They don't have to use a search firm at all. They can do their own interview process.
Correct.
Or they could appoint, or they could establish an interim.
Correct. Correct. Right, statute says the board appoints, doesn't say you have to do any particular method in reaching that decision.
All right.
But the timeline goes fast, so.
The prereqs?
I'm sorry?
Prereqs to be a superintendent.
Right, yeah, so some of the basics are, there's a, there's a, the person has to hold a superintendent certificate. That's, that, you know, that's something that the, we get a search firm or if we do it, you know, we would have to check and make sure that they hold that proper certificate through the state of Maryland, MSD. Yeah, I'll, let me get to the statute really quick, cause there's, there's a.
And there are two other superintendent searches going. There will potentially be two other searches, at least at this point in time going on.
On the east shore?
Worcester.
Yes, and.
And I'm gonna read to you the qualifications in a second.
Let me think about it, cause there's three.
Right.
Oh, Allegheny County, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're kind of in the middle.
Allegheny, Worcester and Queen Anne's. Just FYI, that's certainly something to think about.
Absolutely.
Multiple searches going on at one time.
So the qualifications to be a superintendent by statute are the certificate that I mentioned. They have to have graduated from an accredited college or university. And they have to have completed two years of graduate work at an accredited college, accredited college or university, including public school administration, supervision and methods of teaching. And then the appointment of the county superintendent has to be approved in writing by the state superintendent. And so I handle that at the end of the process, after you all have selected a finalist. I, and you make that announcement of who that person is, I then write to the state superintendent. And usually within a matter of, you know, shortly thereafter, we would expect to hear back from the state superintendent regarding their, the state superintendent's approval of that appointment. But that is a precondition.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, so I'm tracking, they don't have to have a doctorate then?
They do not.
No.
They have several superintendents. It's basically a credit count. In specific categories, they do an audit on your, on your credit base. So you do not, but.
The reason you see it is cause it's so many credits, it usually ends up.
Exactly, yeah. The majority of the superintendents do have a doctorate degree.
I've just seen it over like repeatedly, that's why I was just making. But if we have a candidate or people coming up asking, I just wanna make sure I have the, the proper information.
I, I checked your local policies and procedures. I didn't see anything in particular about, you know, the person has to be a resident of Queen Anne's County. I didn't see anything like that. So, you know, you, I'm basically just looking at state laws, you don't have any local rules. Some other counties have local rules saying, the person has to live here or something like that. But I didn't see anything for you.
Any other questions? We will move on to the board handbook review and revisions, it's an action item. We did not approve this at the last meeting because there were still questions.
There was a couple of questions that, so the ones I had was the copy that we had that there was comments and stuff on. There was a bunch of different pages that didn't match what we have now as our handbook. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was able to read through them and compare them. I mean, they're, they weren't, I mean, I don't know, everybody could have a difference of opinion. I don't think there is anything that, that is that major or significant. And then there was a couple of things in there that I had comments from board members, past and present, stating like a couple of the things in there that we don't do. So just as long as everybody is on the same page, like the board retreat and the self-evaluation stuff. That hasn't been done while I've been here, so just checking in with other board members to see what their thoughts and opinions were.
If we're not doing this stuff, it shouldn't be in there.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're eliminating a couple of things, make sure we just, if we're not doing a board retreat, we're in self-evaluation, all that kind of stuff. If, if it's in there, we should be doing it.
The last one we did was local.
The last retreat we did? Yeah, we did.
We did it here.
We did, and I guess you might not have been on the board at that point.
No, I don't think so, cause we've never done anything.
And I, I know that I brought it up to the board and they're the ones who decided not to do the retreat. That's not to say that we can't do a retreat and we're happy to accommodate that.
I'm just saying if we're, if it's in the handbook, we should be doing it. If we choose not to do the retreat, I don't know what the retreat pertains, I haven't been on board, so I don't really know.
I mean, it depends on the topics of what the board wants to hear. Sometimes it's specific things like reports on attendance or graduation rate, you know, those types of things. Or sometimes it's like, we wanna hear more about the Open Means Act or we wanna hear more about something that, you know, MAB can provide as it relates to legislation or, you know, budgets and things like that, so.
The last one we included, the rebranding.
Yes, that's right.
And we had new goals and mission statements and mission statements and stuff that needed to be.
Does it usually take place here? Do they have them at like a restaurant or?
Nope, right there.
Restaurant right here and we typically.
When I picture a retreat, I think of, you're going to do a team building, you're going to do something that involves like the legislation.
I mean, in all fairness, we really haven't had the funding for that. If we did have the funding, that, it's a great idea. And in the past, I think some of us have engaged in those types of retreats before, but, but no, recently we haven't been doing that. And the, from my perspective, the executive team is happy to entertain anything that the board would want. If you provide us with topics and dates that you're available and a timeframe. Cause that one, I think we ended up doing like nine to two, that was, I've done them before, believe me, from eight to five. I mean, we've had different opportunities, so whatever the board would like to do and whatever. whatever the board would like to do and whatever um, topics they would like to hear, uh, we're happy to accommodate that. I also wanna give a plug that um, ESMEC does a retreat every year. Um, this year, the retreat is in um, Ocean City. It's a full day retreat. Um, I believe that Mrs. Dennis has already sent that information out with a, with a beg to please put that on your calendars. I, I really strongly encourage you to try your best to, to, to do that with your new superintendent because it's a very good opportunity to, to kind of bond together, have a day, to just kind of um, work through some good content together. Usually the um, teacher of the year usually speaks for the state of Maryland. Typically, there's another motivational type speaker. Um, always good information, always well um, developed. And so I would strongly encourage you to take that time off. I'm sure Mrs. Dennis can pull that data up and share it again with everyone. So that is one type of retreat that, that the board typically will engage in. Um, but we're happy to do, um, absolutely happy to provide anything else.
It's uh, very informational based on whatever we need.
Yes, absolutely, 100%.
I don't, I don't see that being an issue. I, I mean, I personally don't see that being a bad thing. But if they didn't do it in the past, doesn't mean we can't change it now or we do do it. I mean, that's up.
Absolutely.
Your guys' opinion.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, more information, you know, knowledge is power. So the more information we have, you know, it just makes us better, but I don't know what your guys' opinion on that scenario is.
But either way, whatever, anybody else, if they wanna keep it and then add, you know, an informa, you know, request an informational item or?
Right.
And MAB offers a ton of programs throughout the year, but also they do, they facilitate um, um, retreats.
Team building opportunities.
I've, I've been in those, yeah.
Anything costs money right now, that's a no.
Yeah, no, maybe it doesn't cost.
But I'm saying if they, if they have those options where they, they come in and provide services.
They do, MAB will come in and um.
MAB representative did part of that session the last time we did it from 9 to 2.
Yep, she did part of that session on, um, I believe it was on the Open Meetings Act and, and, and also kind of like the role of a board member, like what your role is and she articulated out each piece of that and just talked about, you know, how collectively you're one voice and things like that, so.
Do you have anything else, Alexis?
No, that was it. So if everybody's good with it, then um.
So it's just trying to match.
Yep.
Yeah.
Us being new board members, like we didn't, like we see the difference in the handbooks, but not being here, we can't fully speak on and fully understand the operational aspect of it. So we're gonna rely on you two to if you guys say it's gonna be, we've read.
I have no problems with the changes. I'd like to make a sugge, just a suggestion, obviously, um, you know, to you guys about how you wanna proceed. I'd like to be able to get a final version together without, you know, with the suggested edits and then make sure that I'm interpreting how you want it to be edited correctly and then maybe put this on the next February 5th agenda to be voted upon. That would be um, my, a suggestion.
Okay. I can send you all the page numbers where differs from this one.
So through Google Docs, I'm able to track changes, but if you have any, if, I can, um, I'll try to work on this and get it done by the end of um, next week. So that way I can get it to everybody so that you have some ample time to provide me with any kind of feedback that you'd like to see changed. And then once we have a, like a clean final copy, I think that'd be the best way to move forward to, to vote.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
That works. Any objections or any other comments?
No, sounds great.
Okay. Ooh, last item. Future meetings and events, February 5th, 2025, 6 p.m. Uh, at this point, um, I need somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to adjourn the January 22nd, 2022, 2025 work session.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.